This is a meeting of the Reno City Council. Mr. George Leedus in the pledge, please rise, take your hat off, put your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This time we'll observe a moment of silence. And let's please remember all the people back in Ferguson and your thoughts. And also remember Paul Laxalt, not the senator, but young Paul Laxalt that was the fundraiser for Catholic charities and things. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Cheevey, absent Breckus, absent Zadra, Delgado, George, Jordan, Kachal.
We'll go to public comment at this time. Bishop Wynn. Jim Hall. You wish to speak, sir? Come on up and speak. Identify yourself for the record, please.
James Hall.
Okay.
I'd like to talk about the campaign signs.
About what, sir?
Campaign, political signs all over town.
Okay, move the mic over towards you a little bit. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, the political signs.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to see something done about them. They are so trashy. They're all over town. You see them on almost every corner. Some of them you'll see two or three for the same person. Can you people do something about it?
Not as long as there's free speech. But if we can, where they can take them down at a certain time, we do have an ordinance and we can enforce that.
Can't you pass another ordinance to stop the signs completely?
The council can bring that up and look at it, sir.
There's other towns that do that.
Okay.
I've had visitors from out of town ask me, "What's going on with all these signs?" I say, "I don't know why." And it surely won't get my vote.
Well, the council in future will look at it, sir.
I'd sure like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Your Honor, honored council people. My name is David Chikar, independent artist. I'm here to inform you that a law you recently passed had unintended consequences that can really damage the city of Reno. Please pay attention. But first, you all deserve our respect and our appreciation in your passage of Reno's exclusionary law, this Reno Municipal Code 8.23.070, because your intent was noble and it was for a good purpose. It was implemented by you and the city attorney's office, good people all, all trying to do the right thing for the city by protecting our public parks. The exclusionary law works because there's been a reduction in police calls to our public parks. However, there's a but, and it's a big but. Unfortunately, there's unintended consequences of exclusion because the federal district court, in this case of Yecel versus City of Portland in Pioneer Courthouse Square, the citation, write this down, 322 Federal Supplement 2nd, 1119, is out of the Ninth Circuit, Federal District Court, 2004. That case held that because of federal district court in this jurisdiction, in the published case that I've just cited, held that because an exclusion law provides police the discretion to ban someone from a public park without any judicial court first determining your guilt or innocence. In other words, exclusion enables police to be judge and jury and execute a sentence of banishment of a person from a city Reno public park without any court first adjudicating your guilt or innocence, and therefore violates the constitutional rights of due process and equal protection of the laws. You don't have to take my word for it, and I would suggest not even take the city attorney's word for it. Use your own discretion, read this case, and see if it makes sense to repeal Reno Municipal Code 8.23.070 in order to avoid the very real possibility of someone suing Reno in federal district court under Title 42, Section 1983. And please remember Marbury versus Madison, all laws which are repugnant to the Constitution are null and void. In this other Supreme Court quotation, "It is not the function of government to keep the citizen from falling into error. It is the function of the citizen to keep the government from falling into error." Thank you.
Thank you.
Pictures.
You're it.
There we go. Billy Howard, Reno resident, thank you so much for your vote for the bees. My yard is listed as an organic pesticide-free, non-GMO, bee-friendly habitat in Reno. Only one of eight such gardens in the area. Now there will be 28 more, thanks to your visionary decision. Regarding puppy mail-free Reno, someone who is sitting in this room right now told me that our 11,600 signatures don't count. I beg to differ. So does the Secretary of State, as does the city clerk, who recently issued this statement. I have been assured by both local legal counsel and the Nevada Secretary of State that digital signatures are completely acceptable. When I open my mouth, you should hear 12,000 voices coming out, enough to fill Lawler Event Center. As you've heard me attest countless times, I programmed this petition myself and have it resident on our website. This is not a change.org national petition. 6,600 hard copy signatures were gotten here in Reno from people signing at our booth or from many families asking their friends to sign in their homes and even knocking on neighbors' doors. Eighty-five percent of our signatures are Northern Nevadans. If you add all of Lake Tahoe and Northern California east of Sacramento, the number floats to 90 percent. Having worked with petitions since I was 10 years old, knocking on neighbors' doors, asking them to bring Bart to San Jose, I can tell you that congresspersons factor petition signatures by 100. It takes a lot for someone to hear about an issue, ask for more information before filling out their personal data. Factoring our signatures by 100 would mean that we have the support of over 1 million people. So let's peg it down a bit and factor it by 10. That means we have well over 110,000 people in the area who support. Now, the other 200,000 residents can't be seen as against, nor can they be seen as for. They are neutral, leaving us with 110 representative supporters. Now, we know there are some people who oppose this. A handful of people have spammed our 4,500-member Facebook page from time to time with unpleasant comments rather than cogent arguments. But you would count the opposition as those signing a counter petition. As far as I'm aware, and I would be one of the first to know if there were one, no such counter petition exists. Therefore, you have 110 representative numbers in favor of this ban, with zero to be counted as opposed. Factor zero by 10 or 100, and you get zero. Next meeting, we'll have representatives of the 101 businesses who support this measure here to ask you to please bring this matter to a vote. San Diego, Los Angeles, Austin voted on this in less than a month. Chicago voted on it in one day. And I might add, all of these were unanimous. Reno is going on month number nine. I'm leaving you with four copies of the over 700 comments that are posted on our site. I ask that you share those copies with each other and take a look through them as when people were signing, they meant those comments for you. It helps to add faces to the names, some of which I'm sure you know. There are thousands more comments like that that came into our site and can be seen on our comments page. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question for staff. Do we have any initiatives or referendum on our November ballot? Has a claim been made that one has been offered for the ballot? Has someone made a claim that there is an initiative or a referendum that is offered for our November ballot? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Mark Markell and I'm a construction director resident. I come up here every meeting to show what can happen when you get in the car with the drunk driver. It's my mission in life to educate students in the community about what can happen if you get in the car with the drunk driver. I suffer TBI. I try and be, Mr. Mayor, you're terrible. Hi. You're pretty. But anyways, I suffer TBI and I get in a truck, as you can tell. So I just try to show people what can happen when you drink and drive. I, ah, fuck it, I, when you get in the car with the drunk driver, I drink and drive. My life is completely changed through Mark's path. People against drunk driving. I hope to prevent others from making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences I have. And I, I, I very, I, I, I should be reading, but I'm not.
That's okay, Mark.
What?
I said, "That's okay."
Okay.
I got your point. Thank you.
I, I, well, I do want people to get in the car with the drunk driver, and I don't want people to drink and drive with, if you want to take your own life, that's fine, but it isn't people. I don't believe that's, that's, that's wrong. And I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Jeff Church, resident of the city of Reno. Just for the record, we now have a full city council. We had two absent, and now Meschevi and Breckus are here. I wish to protest what I understand is the city is backtracking on promises made at the June city council meeting where we discussed the upcoming October 2nd Public Safety Forum. I'm now led to believe that those with opposing views will not be represented, and instead it'll surely, it'll be strictly a handpicked panel of Reno officials to spoon-feed the public their slant on public safety and cutbacks with no dissent allowed. This is outrageous, and I urge the media and those sponsoring the event at UNR to protest this. It is contrary to what I specifically heard from the previous city council, and I followed that up with a record correction with a letter to Mr. Klinger predicting what was going to happen essentially, and it did. I made specific plans to come back from San Diego to attend this meeting, to speak, to be heard, not just for three minutes, but to be able to present a different point of view. We need to get the word out to the community. This is not about active shooter or public safety in terms of what you discussed at the last meeting last week. This is about automatic aid. This is about the labor contracts. This is about the bad press that we're getting. This is about the cutbacks. This is about ballot measures, et cetera. So I urge that you reverse yourself and allow opposition to speak. We have a blue-ribbon panel that came up with recommendations on fire service. Why aren't they on the panel? So again, I urge you to retract that. And moving kind of along in the same area, just for the record, on fire-issue ballot R3, 1996 funding, I understand that's going to be on the ballot measure next week. That's great. And I did mention at the previous council meeting, but again, for the record, I did give a copy of an AG Attorney General opinion to the deputy city attorney as well as the clerk. That's opinion number 2011-4 that supports the issue that you have to have a basic floor of firefighters and police and any of those ballot measure monies, which is $14 million now, have to be in addition to that. So I look forward to that meeting. Unfortunately, I will be in San Diego on my way to a Padre game, so unfortunately, you won't have me next week. Thank you very much.
We do get breaks sometimes. I had to say that, Mr. Church. Sam Diney.
Sam Diney, the encyclopedia of Reno government, and before I even start out, several people out in the lobby watched the last meeting and told me they feel that the mayor deprived me of three minutes of my public comment and that I should ask the mayor to give me, and here's what I'm putting on the table, ask the mayor to give me the three minutes that I was deprived, that were taken from me in the last meeting and give me six minutes now. And everybody out there bet me, so I got a lot of money riding on this, Mr. Mayor, they bet me that you would allow me to have the extra three minutes. And if you don't allow it, I'm going to lose all that bet money. So there you go. I won't even wait for an answer because I know what it is.
I'd go ahead and deliver the money.
You're giving me the extra three minutes?
No, no.
No, well, I'm not gonna, I win the bet.
You said you would lose if I didn't give you the three minutes.
You're right. Maybe I misspoke. You knew what I meant, though.
Yeah, I meant, you said that, I know what you said. You said if I didn't give you three minutes, and I'm not giving you time now that you've challenged me. I'm using your time right now, and you will be able to deliver that money to that phantom person that bet you.
Okay. I had the other side of the bet, by the way, Mr. Mayor. So I win the bet. Anyway, I lost a minute after that, trying to get an extra minute. Anyways, I'm Sam Diney, and you kind of see what I put up. Look at, you got some people out.
We know who you are.
Sam Diney Show. You see what I get to put up for the last 12 years? Thank goodness we're going to have somebody else here. No, just kidding. Sam Diney, Sam Diney is the most brilliant person in the city of Reno and also the most humble. When I was announcing the different issues that I was the driving force for, I forgot to mention Mr. Klinger there. He owes his job to Sam. So did Mr. Slaughter over there, the county manager. They owe their job. Sam was the only person, and certainly you listen to the citizens, right? Sam was the only citizen who came to the podium and recommended that man. And the same thing over there at County Commission. Therefore, I was the driving force. The most important thing right now, though, is this Tesla operation. For those who don't, I'm the poster child for Tesla. Mr. Musk down there wants an honest government, and he knows that Sam Diney is the greatest watchdog, certainly in Reno, if not the world. And he wants to come to Reno because he knows that Sam Diney will be watchdogging the government, and therefore there will be an honest government, right? Sure. What Tesla is, is a battery, totally battery-operated car that can go 200 miles, but it's more than just a battery-operated, these are for the people out there who don't know who Tesla is, but more than a battery-operated car, it's also an infrastructure corporation. They are building, not gas stations, they are building electricity stations across the nation. There's already about 200 of them. Tesla has five different states that it's thinking of going to, and if you guys are smart, you will get on the bandwagon with Sam Diney because I'm going to drive those people to the battery, have the battery factory right here in Reno instead of those other places. Do you support me or not? Mr. Musk will be getting this video, and I don't see any heads nodding. They do not support me. All right, Mr. Musk, there you go. California's looking good, or maybe even Texas. Who knows?
I hope Mr. Musk didn't see that. Sometimes you don't get a break. Having no other public comment cards, I'm going to close the public comment section. Oh, I thought one was coming out. Mr. City Manager, you have any more announcements today?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I wanted to take this opportunity to remind the general public that the 2014 Northern Nevada Heart and Stroke Walk and 5K Run is September 21st. As a board member for this organization, I'm happy to announce that there are three City of Reno teams. Our organization is proud to be a part of the fight against cardiovascular disease and stroke. If you were not able to participate, if you are not able to participate as a walker or runner, I invite you to support one of the events, many teams, by making a donation at nevadaheartwalk.com. Just click on Give and select a team. The city of Reno is conducting a community survey ahead of our Public Safety Forum, which is scheduled for Thursday, October 2nd at 6:30 PM. The survey gives our residents the opportunity to guide the discussion at the forum by telling us what they want our public safety team to address. The survey can be accessed at reno.gov/thinkreno. In July, our Parks and Recreation and Community Services Department hosted the 2014 Triple Crown Sports Fast Pitch Softball Championships. Nearly 150 teams from throughout the nation participated in the tournament. In a recent economic impact report conducted by the University of Nevada Reno, it was estimated that the event provided a nearly $4.5 million boost to our local economy. And on a related note, three of our region's major events are happening in the next few weeks. The Best in the West Nugget Rib Cook-Off starts today and ends on Monday. The Great Reno Balloon Race is September 5th through the 7th, and the National Championship Air Races are September 10th through the 14th. And as a final reminder to staff and the general public, the city of Reno offices will be closed on Monday, September 1st in observance of Labor Day.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go to approval of the agenda. Pulled items will be item D2 would be pulled. Item F1, Meadowwood Mall, will be after the consent agenda.
It's a public hearing.
Public hearing. Proclamation will be delivered International Week of Peace and Nonviolence. Presentation, economic, D1, Economic Development. Resolution, H1, Amendments of Fees. Now, we did agree to hear that after the consent agenda. There will be a public hearing tonight at 6 o'clock. Item M1, West Meadows Estates. Any other changes on the agenda?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I've asked for item L5 related to Tomworth and the environmental violations there and staff in the interim. Since I asked for that item, prepared a detailed memo on the status, so I don't see a need to have that discussion and direct staff to prepare that update.
You want to pull that?
Yes, and they'll be coming back, just for those who are interested. The memo states they'll be coming back in September with a status update at that time.
Okay, that's L5.
Yeah, yes, yes, sir.
L5 or 4?
L5, yeah.
Okay. That's a pulled item. Have motion to approve, have second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash dispersments, any disclosures? Chair to entertain a motion?
Can I approve?
Have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Breckus, will you deliver the proclamation, please?
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor, to read the proclamation today. I'm joined by Rita Sloan from the Sierra Interfaith Alliance?
Action for Peace.
Action for Peace Alliance. Whereas September 21st is the International Day of Peace, is established by the United Nations General Assembly in 1981, and whereas peace is the goal of all moral people and societies of the world, and whereas the United States ranks 101st in the 2014 Global Peace Index, and whereas social ills arising from violence, poverty, and climate destruction undermine peace, and whereas the nationwide campaign, nonviolence, has invited all people of faith, conscience, and benevolence to speak publicly for an end to violence and war, poverty, and environmental destruction, September 21st through September 27th, 2014, and resolve to create a culture of peace and nonviolence. Now therefore, I, Jenny Breckus, on behalf of Mayor Kachal and the Reno City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 21 through 27, 2014, as International Week of Peace and Nonviolence. Thank you, Rita. And you can ask our vice mayor if you can address, if you want to speak a few words about what is planned for the week.
Just thank you very much. I have to speak for, for just a moment.
Absolutely.
Thank you all, and thank you very much for issuing this. I believe this is the third year in a row that the city has issued a proclamation for the International Day of Peace. And this year, I represent, well, I represent a small group of Sierra Interfaith Action for Peace, but I also represent a growing collaboration of people and groups working on bringing attention to these, to the big issues of violence in our society, the violence of war, the violence of poverty, and the violence of environmental destruction. And we want to see these words more than just words on paper, but alive in our community. And then we have an event planned on September 27th that will be at the City Plaza downtown Reno. And we just want to bring attention to everyone that violence is not inevitable, peace is possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is presentations, Economic Development Update. Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. As you know, this is the time on our agenda where we take the opportunity to acknowledge and recognize some of the great things that are happening in our local economy. Today, we have the pleasure of having with us Yaifat Chin and Andrea Gregg, who are owners of a local business that actually started in a City of Reno facility and expanded over time. So I would like to invite to the podium Yaifat and Andrea.
Hi, I'm Yaifat. It's pronounced Ifa-chen.
And Andrea Gregg.
And we're from Kaia Fit South Reno. And Kaia is from Hawaiian. It means one with a beautiful body. And what we mean by beautiful bodies are strong bodies, happy minds, and healthy lives. We are women's-only fitness group, and we're located in South Reno. We have, we're a franchise that started in Carson, but it actually took off here in Reno, and we were the original franchisee. Women-only fitness group. Why women-only? Women always put themselves second to their career, to their husbands, to their kids, everywhere in their life, and just by being only women, we can just wake up in the morning, roll out of bed, and come and work. out of bed, and come and work out in the same type of settings group. This actually, this picture was taken in our location, and as you can see, there is not too many equipment. It's only us. We use our body weight just as exercise, and we use our handbags. So they are, they are sand filled with, garbage bag filled with sand, and we take duct tape and we make them our own. And then each girl make their own handbag, and we use that as our weight, if you like, and just have it more fun and whimsical. We put the fun back into fitness, so we kind of...
And I think the important thing with Kaia Fit, as you'll see in the picture too, women's only, like she said, the camaraderie is huge. At our particular location, all of our trainers and the two of us now as co-owners, we started as Kaia Girls three or four years ago. Yifat moving here, wanting to find a new group and meet new people, myself trying to get ready for a wedding. So when you buy a Groupon and you never look back, and three years later, now you're co-owning, there's something really passionate about the program. We have clients who've been with us for all four years, and our range is anywhere between about 22, I'd say, to our oldest client currently is 72, with rheumatoid arthritis, who now has improved dexterity in her hands and can lift and has improved her muscle mass by, I think it was about 4.5% the last session. So really, a lot of diversity within Kaia Fit. And as these next pictures show, these are some of the various locations, which is why we're really excited to be here today, because although it started in Carson, our location being the first franchisee, there's now one in Midtown, there's one in Sparks, Spanish Springs, and then ourselves in South Reno. So they continue to just pop up everywhere. We are now nationwide with about 3,000 Kaia Girls and about 56-plus locations and growing. So pretty neat that it's grassroots and started here.
Andrea was talking about our different age group in our program, and it's really nice because you can have different abilities, different body types, different backgrounds, different goals, and everybody work together just because we have three levels to every exercise. Our Balance, which is our beginners, Strength, and Kaia, which is full blast power. We are, when we started, we actually started in the parks. So you can see us in parks, on trails. We use the city scenery. We like to be, as they say, "one with nature," so we like to go out. Because we don't need a lot of equipment, we can do our exercise anywhere, and we like to be part of the city and to kind of give back to the community. Whether if it's somebody come up at 5:00 AM and work out in a park and then bring their kids later on, or just discovering new trails that they can go with their dogs or with their bikes, go on. We do participate a lot in the events. Around town, we do RTOs, we do tri-trainings, we have a running group. We do a couple warmups around the year. This is, for example, from the Susan G. Komen race. And we usually do the warmup just to get everybody started. The energy, we're a fun group, usually.
So these are the three founders of Kaia Fit. Nikki is on left, Kristen in the center, and Sharon. Three wonderful minds came together. Nikki is an athlete and has been for years and owns a gymnastics facility in Carson, and basically just saw moms coming with their kids and kind of asked herself, you know, when did we as older adults and women stop playing? So the idea of Kaia Fit emerged, and just the three of them together are quite amazing, and they brought back the fun and fitness. And again, the women of all abilities and levels can now come together as one team to accomplish similar goals, whether it be losing weight, improving your strength, doing a handstand, running your first mile. So we have a lot of variation in the group.
Thank you so much for allowing us to be here.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Great job.
Thanks. Thank you for having us.
Moving on to the consent agenda, anybody have any items they'd like to pull?
I would like to pull both E4 and E5, please.
Anybody else? Do we have any public comment? No? I'll see them anyway, so. Okay, got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Jenny, E4.
Back to E4. I have two questions for staff. The first question, I'll let staff get up there, is, is this gonna help with the nitrogen problem? Like immediately help with the nitrogen problem? Is it, and in terms of the nitrogen problem, does it get 2%, 10%, 20% there?
Your question. Let me introduce myself. My name is David Kershaw, City of Reno Public Works. And in regards to your question, the, this, this will not impact any change in the actual efficiency removal of the nitrogen out there. It's really just part of the continued maintenance of the existing process out there. So the equipment's getting old. We need to replace that equipment. Right now, it doesn't change the efficiency of the process.
It's just a status quo thing. And then I see that only one, and thank you for that, I see that only one bid came in, and I'm wondering where the decision was, or why there would, you know, we've been spending a lot of money out at the plant, and we, you know, a lot gets bid. Some of the professional services, I assume you have a list, you go off of qualified vendors, but on a bid item, only one bid came in. So was there thought into going to rebid it and seeing if you could get more competitive bids?
That was discussed between the various people involved, the staff, as well as the contractors out there, trying to figure out why we only got one bid out there. And the thought right now was, we didn't think the amount of time and effort to go out to rebid would justify the savings that we might see out there from what we were hearing on the street for the project itself.
It's kind of like, if you held up this, you would disrupt some sort of critical path you're working on out there, maybe, or is that what?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Well, if you, if you took the time out to go rebid and get another vendor and look, would you, that time is something you don't want to lose because you're on some critical path to make the improvements out there?
That's, that's part of it is. It is a critical facility out there. We wanted to minimize potential for failure, and so we want to get this done as quick as we could. And weighing all that was what we took into account. Recommend the award to the sole bidder out there.
Okay.
The other thing, just to let you know, I think we had, off the top of my head, I think we had four prime bidders that held plan, or plan holders out there, just so you know. So a variety did look at it, and we did ask them at the time why they didn't bid it. And it is a, without going into a lot of detail on it, it is a fairly complicated project, and there weren't a lot of the plan holders that were specialized enough.
Okay, okay. Looks like everything out there is specialized, but I guess this one, but, okay, I appreciate, I just wanted to hear the thinking, and I accept those responses, and I appreciate all the work that everyone's putting in out there because it is important. So all motion?
Got a motion to approve, do I have a second? Motion in a second, all those in favor? Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. E5, Jerry?
Now, my question with this one for staff is that we're throwing in a little more money for some unforeseen, there was a quote in the staff report, I hadn't seen a quote like that before, of unanticipated utility conflicts. And I just, because this is probably the largest infrastructure project we, the city, have going on right now, wondering, are we delaying in our time on this project?
For the record, Dustin Waters, Public Works. No, the project is, there are still some ongoing issues, but the project, the main component that needed to be completed before the UNR facilities are in place, has been completed.
Okay, that was my next question, is if we're holding up that development that wants to hook up to there. So they're, they're going that. What was, when you originally, I guess, went out to bid or whatever, what was the time this was going to be done, and are we still on time to finish this up?
Well, no, it's gone beyond the original timeframe. The original timeframe, from what I recall, was probably January. It extended, the official timeframe went into either late March, early April, and we're still making some adjustments due to some modifications that we had to make during construction. So, but the main components are finished. What happened due to the, you know, there was several reasons why it went beyond the original timeframe, and I can get into those if you like, but what they're working on now is the odor control system.
Oh.
Because during construction, we had to make some changes to the alignment and the vertical alignment, and that, you know, caused the odor control, some more changes that needed to be required to the odor control system.
Okay, so the anticipated wrapping-up date is?
We're probably within a couple of weeks of wrapping it up. I mean, there's probably some slurry that needs to happen on wells. No, that actually just recently happened. So within a couple of weeks, we will be done with the odor control system. That's if nothing else unforeseen happens with that.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm glad to know it sounds like you'll button it up this construction season.
Okay, I just wanted to make a clarification in case these projects are getting intertwined. This project was constructed as the next phase for North Virginia sewer pipe that came down North Virginia, lift station. Currently, there's also a project going down Valley Road.
The Phase 2 for this year's sewer projects?
I'm not sure what the title is. I think it's the 2014 Sewer Rehabilitation Project. So that is, as far as I know, that's not my project, but it is ongoing. And from what I understand, that will be completed, you know, in time as well.
Okay, okay. I appreciate, just, you know, when timeframes slip on these infrastructure projects, I just have questions, and I wondered about the dorm issue. So thank you very much, and all approved to make the recommendation to add more sewer enterprise funds to the interceptor project.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. We're now going to go to item H1.
Resolution number 7996, resolution to amend the City Clerk's citywide fire prevention permits, communications, and technology and police sections of the fiscal year 1415 fee schedule as they relate to public records requests and community development and building permit sections of the fiscal year 1415 fee schedule as they relate to NRS 354.59891 and allowing for necessary administrative changes throughout the fiscal year 1415 fee schedule in its entirety.
I've got, I do have a couple, I've got a motion in a second, but I do have a couple people that wanted to speak on this item. First will be Teresa DiLoreto. Come up here and speak while you're still dry. Teresa is actually going tomorrow to the Dunk Tank
I am.
For the, the, the new ALS Ice Bucket Challenge on steroids, I guess, is what it would be.
That's right, and I am wearing my wet suit and goggles. Mr. Vice Mayor and members of City Council, for the record, I'm Teresa DiLoreto, President of the Builders Association of Northern Nevada and with DiLoreto Homes. The Builders Association is in support of Agenda Item H1 to reduce building fees. I want to thank the staff for working with the members of the industry and to establish a mutually beneficial outcome. And we certainly look forward to continuing a positive working relationship in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Curtis Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Curtis Rowe, and over the last several years, I've had the pleasure of serving as chairman of the Building Enterprise Fund, Advisory Fund Committee. Item H1 before you today is a result of a tremendous effort and commitment from staff. Through the implementation of advanced technology and cross-functional staffing, the Building Department has been able to create a economically efficient division all the while providing exceptional customer service. And I, and I do mean exceptional, probably the best in the area from the feedback I've had from people. The proposal before you today has been put together by staff with city finance and is necessary to keep us within the guidelines of NRS 354.59891. Additionally, this proposal has provisions for the hiring of additional staff, procurement of assets, and increased overhead necessary to maintain the level of service as building continues on its comeback. So I ask you today to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Got a motion in a second. We have discussion or questions?
I have a few questions for staff on this. So Mr. Crowe somewhat touched on it, there's provisions for extra staff. You know, the 700, in the State of the City address, we had 700 single-family starts. What have we hit? 1,000 this fiscal year? Are you going to have the resources to, quote, "person up, staff up" if it gets going? Or are we losing some sort of cushion that we might have to rapidly respond to the needs to get inspectors out there and plans checked? I've sat, I'm the liaison to the BFA, I attend pretty regularly, so I knew, I've been following this and knowing this is coming, but I just want to hear what the plan is.
Thank you. Fred Turnier, Community Development Director. And we anticipate it through a public process before City Council, anticipating the opportunity to bring back augmentations to the budget if needed to have a staff up. So before, we looked at a percentage to decrease the amount of money, we did look at a factor of what it would take if we had to increase more of our staff. Our current challenge are retirements going on right now and filling those retirements, just maintaining the service levels that we do have.
I mean, obviously, people in the development community like certainty, and if we drop fees now, are you saying that on our quarter, next quarterly augmentation, we could maybe jack them up? I mean, I hate to see a rollercoasting of fees within one year.
Oh, I misspoke. I thought you were talking about resources. Regarding the percentage, we're comfortable with a 35% decrease in our building fees based on what our current ending fund balance is and our anticipated growth in the Building Enterprise Fund. We, for July, we had over 700 billing permits, which is higher than the previous July. If that continues, we're looking at anywhere close to about 8,000 billing permits for this next fiscal year, which is higher than what we currently have.
And you're meeting the turnaround and performance goals on all that and everything?
Our performance goal, goals, it's a 10-day turnaround, 90% of the time. Currently, we're at 98%.
Okay, okay. One last question is, early on, I guess last spring, there was discussion in, in the budget of allocating some of the BFA funds to assist the city in getting the zoning ordinance redone, and that, as you know, is integral to the development process and the building process. Where is that money? I think it came into the budget. Is it still in the budget?
Yes, it is in the budget. It's approximately $150,000, and it's in the budget.
For this fiscal year?
For this fiscal year.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for those questions and responses.
Okay, we've got a motion to adopt the resolution in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mayor, on item F1, public hearing. F1, has proper notice been given?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given. No correspondence was received.
I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment cards? Seeing none? This is, anybody have any questions, comments, motion?
I'd like to motion to uphold the recommendation of the staff.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H2, Mr. Mayor?
Resolution number 7997, resolution accepting streets, Demony Ranch Villages, Unit 23A, portions of Brittany Park Drive, Overland Park Drive, Washington Park Drive, and Walton Park Drive.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you want me? Got a motion in a second, item H2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H3?
Resolution number 7998, resolution accepting streets, Lemon Drive, portion of Dedicated Area 4, a portion of Lemon Drive from Dedicated Track Map of Lemon Memorial, Kenosa, and Volterra Drives, Track Map Number 4807.
Move to a dot. I have a question on this.
I have a question on this for staff.
I've got a motion in a second. Jenny?
Second paragraph under background says the subject street section was constructed under an RTC contract. What's an RTC contract of the nature of this in a single-family subdivision?
For the record, Bill Goll, Senior Civil Engineer. RTC was reconstructing or constructing this segment of roadway, and it was, the Miraval subdivision was adjacent to that. The lands needed for this project were part of that Miraval subdivision, and so the track map provided the lands for the RTC contract. Dedication map, the land for this, it was realigned on Lemon was in this area and was done by RTC.
Lemon Valley was...
Lemon, yeah.
Yeah, or Lemon Drive, yeah.
Yeah. Was realigned in this area, and those lands was on the Miraval subdivision.
Oh, it just happened to be that the road project was adjacent to this subdivision?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion to adopt in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We did have a recess for the labor session on the agenda at this time, but that's been withdrawn. We're not doing a labor session today, correct? So, we'll move on to item J1. Mr. Chisel.
The sales tax revenues from, Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration, I apologize. The sales tax revenues from Cabela's Star Bond District formed in 2006 are insufficient to meet the bond payments for the 2007A and 2007B sales tax increment bonds, and at this point, all bond reserves have been utilized. All funds pledged to the bonds have been properly allocated, and no additional funds are required. And in fact, the bond ordinance simply requires disclosure to the City Council when this occurs. This is not considered any type of default. It is not considered that the council needs to take any action. In fact, bond ordinance requires only disclosure to the council and no action is required. Staff recommends the City Council accepts the report.
Okay, and just again, I mean, it's been stated before, this has no impact on the general fund.
Nope.
It is, it is no impact on our city finances at all. It's just a disclosure because we have the bonds in place.
Yes, and the ordinance requires disclosure in the public.
Okay, any questions?
I do have a question. When do these bonds expire?
Well, they're going to, they were going to expire after 25 years, but based on the payment structure, it's going to be, we don't know at this point.
So, they're like the trench bonds that'll just go out...
Correct.
...to infinity until there's repayment.
As long as Cabela's there and is operating, they will be in existence.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can't get that to work. Have there, have one of them been satisfied? We had one year when they were satisfied, correct?
Yes, at the beginning, the first couple of years, they were satisfied, and there was reserves in place. And I'm actually...
Actually, this is the first year that they, we don't have the full payment, isn't it?
Yeah, this is the first year, I think it was December of this last payment, when the reserves actually were fully depleted. Again, they get only the money that is generated from their project, nothing more, nothing less.
Thank you. May I ask a follow-up question to that of these bonds going on and on? Is, and I hate to, I don't want to make a supposition that is not validated, but is this a tax drain on the city? Say if I was going to go buy item X at Cabela's, my sales tax for item X goes towards these bonds, some percentage, versus if I bought the same item X from retailer down somewhere else, the city's budget would be more whole because that sales tax would then throw or cycle through the C-tax to our general fund, correct?
That is correct. So, if it, you know, Cabela's is similar to Legends on Sparks or to, you know, other properties that may be on non-city or non-county land, that money will go to another entity.
So, there is indirectly an impact to the city's general fund on these bonds staying out there. I guess I would draw that conclusion then.
Well, you could also, the argument at the time is, and I think Cabela's, it holds up pretty well, different than other projects, is that a majority of the people that shop there are from out of this area, and you're bringing them here because that's there, and you're actually adding additional revenue because you're getting the 25% of revenue that might not have been there in the first place. And I would, I would argue, in some situations with Star Bonds, that might not be the case, but with Cabela's, it's held up pretty well.
I understand. I'm just, and I don't want to relieve the past, I just want to understand the present and forward-going ramifications of having these bonds out there. So, thank you.
And to correct a statement I made earlier, they do expire after the TID expires, and it is expiring in 2027.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item J2. I do have one public comment on this, Jeff Church.
Thank you very much. For the record, Jeff Church, resident of the city of Reno. I run a law enforcement consulting business. And also for the record, this is the item to discuss the legal fees for the outside Labor Council. I want to support paying the attorney the legal fees in question, and I understand he has made some reduction in fees. I want to point out that as a result of his assistance, we have two Fact Finder reports that confirm that the city is in dire financial straits and unable to pay the monies requested by the unions in question. Also want to point out that, that there are various experts out there that are non-attorneys that are available to serve, and the city might consider those in the future. They don't have to be an attorney to be a labor representative. The unions frequently use an individual known as Ron Drier. He's a great guy. He does an excellent job representing the other side, so to speak. And so, there's plenty of experts out there that could represent the city of Reno without being attorneys. I also just want to put on the record the need for these negotiations because Reno Police and Fire career officers are the highest paid in the United States, highest paid in the world. I've made that comment before, and no one has been able to dispute that since then. I also want to point out and perhaps ask, months ago, Hillary Sheevy, the councilperson, voted against the labor contract, and I'm not faulting her for that, but she indicated she was going to talk to the unions and try and get some concessions on the union, from the unions, as well as on the ridiculous, outrageous, and illegal alcohol and drug policy that the city entered into with the firefighters. So, I'm hoping that we have some result from those talks that she could present to us at some future date, hopefully sooner than later. And obviously, for the record, Ms. Sheevy did accept a lot of massive donations from union members and from the unions, as well as in-kind labor. And so, you know, I would hope that we can reach some consensus with them on reducing our costs and not going broke in 2016, as various experts have said. And just on the record, almost a question, but I think I've got the answer to this. My understanding is that if Ms. Sheevy is elected as mayor in the next election, that that very possibly could result in a special election for the taxpayers that would cost potentially $100,000 or more. So, if I'm wrong on that, maybe off to the side, somebody can let me know. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, and just for the record on that, it's my understanding that if she was elected, it would be the council's choice to either have a special election or to just appoint someone into that seat. So, it's, it's, they could, the council at that time could make a decision either way. In the past, it's always just been appointed to that, to that seat.
J2?
Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration, again, for the record. I'll be brief here. As was discussed at the July 16th council meeting, staff had been incorrectly monitoring the billings of Fisher &amp; Phillips, resulting in the contract amount being exceeded. Several factors led to this issue, as was discussed, and the staff has made changes to correct the issue, included, including weekly monitoring and additional management of the contracts. The city attorney's office has also taken the direction of council and prepared settlement documentation and negotiated a reduced amount to pay Fisher &amp; Phillips. This amount is $132,000 and represents a write-off of $40,000 and $10,000 of a future professional time, which will be rendered by Fisher &amp; Phillips to the city during this fiscal year. Staff recommends approval of the settlement claim, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do have a question, and it's one in which I called the city attorney's office on yesterday. Can, can, can we have the city attorney's office explain why this item at the last meeting required a six-sevenths vote, but today's does not?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Previously, when the extension of the contract became before the city council, you were, that contract was originally entered into under your charter provision, which requires a six-seventh vote to hire legal counsel. This is not the hiring of legal counsel. This is a majority vote. This is a settlement of a disputed claim. The claim is that after that prior contract ended by its term, we continue to receive services at our request, and Mr. Chisel has indicated that. And so, as a city, we have to pay the reasonable value of these services, and that theory legally is called quantum merit, the reasonable salary, reasonable amount of services rendered to the city. So, if we were sued for this amount, we would be paying a reasonable value for their services. Their services were rendered, their services were quality services, so we don't have a dispute as to the value of their services, really. We negotiated with the law firm to provide a discount to this council, as you requested, and we got a substantial discount through pushing through those negotiations of $40,000.
Okay, so just so I can be clear, even though at the last meeting, there was two separate, am I wrong, was there two separate agenda items? Okay, so it's, so now because it's a settlement of a negotiated debt...
It's a settlement of a claim. They're putting a claim into the city of Reno for reasonable value of the services rendered.
Okay, but was that not the case at the last meeting?
The last, maybe I'm confused by your question. The prior meeting where council, and it wasn't the last meeting, it was the meeting that their continuation of their contract came forward, and council did not vote to continue that.
No, no, and I understand that, but I thought the, the prior amount, the 172, I thought that was a separate item. Okay, so why was that separate item? Why, why did we have to have a six-sevenths vote on that separate item when today we do not?
Because the six-seven item was to extend the contract...
And?
For an additional $172,000 and...
I got it.
70279. And let me explain that, too. Even the 172, 10,000 of that were costs. Unfortunately, they advanced costs that were the responsibility of the city, so it technically was only really 162,000. But, I mean, they advanced 10,000 in costs that should have been paid for by the city. But, that was to extend the contract for an additional $172,70279. When the council rejected that, it's now been brought back. They'd made a claim against the city, and as Ms. Chase points out, there is a legal theory called quantum merit. If we were to go to court, the likelihood is, we would lose because the value of the services there were there, so we would probably end up paying 172,70279 plus potential court costs and possible attorney's fees.
Okay. I, for some reason, was recollecting that they were two separate items, one to extend the contract and one to pay the overage, but they were, they were bundled together, hence why it was, okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yes. Mr. Mayor. Thank you. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to Andrew for addressing our concerns, Councilwoman Delgado's, and our concerns, and working with this law firm to reduce the, the cost in this. So, thank you, I really appreciate that. And then, secondly, I want to point out, I voted for this contract not once, but twice, okay? And it said not to exceed $300,000, and that's exactly what happened. It went over by $172,000. So, for me, that's a little bit difficult to swallow. The other thing is it reminds me a little bit of, or a lot of ADP, where we ended up, matter of fact, the amounts were like 175, and this is 172, give or take. So, it reminds me a little bit of ADP. And I understand what you're saying, Tracy, in the, in the sense that we could be held liable. However, for me, I don't feel like the taxpayers should have to foot the bill. I think it's a lot like when you go in to take your car, and they give you an estimate of, or you, you sign away and say, they give you an estimate of $1,000, and then you come and pick up your car, and it's $25,000. So, for me, that's kind of how I look at it. If anything, I would ask this council to ask them to negotiate for at least half of the contract, and that, I think, could be fair. Other than that, it's really hard and difficult for me to support.
And just for the record, when, I mean, I know you said you voted for this contract, and when we initially entered into an agreement with this firm, it was for labor negotiations. Once we were sued by the fire department, by the, by the union, that was an additional...
300?
No, that was the, that was after we entered into initial contract with them for labor negotiations, and then we were sued, and they took on additional responsibilities, which is why there were additional costs locked into this contract. It was because of the lawsuit with IAFF. That's why there were additional costs.
At that time, wouldn't it be reasonable for the law firm to come forward and say, "Let us extend this"?
I'm not, but we asked them to take on...
I'm just saying, you're saying that, and I'm saying they should have been reasonable enough at the cost that they're charging us to come forward and say, "He hasn't had enough funds."
And I think we should have known we were over the budget, too. I mean, I'm not, but we did ask them to take on additional responsibilities, and then we said we weren't going to pay them for them.
Mr. Klinger, did they say to you, "Right now, we're over our budget"? Did they ever allude to this?
Councilwoman, I would ask either Mr. Chisel or Renee Rundus to answer that. They did not say that to me. And I mean, and just a comment for council, and Mr. Chisel stated this, you know, at the meeting when we presented this last time, "We take responsibility for this overage. We should have done a better job of tracking the expenditures on this contract, and we've put measures in place to make sure that this type of overage does not happen again."
Manager, I feel like we're taking quite a bit of the burden off of the law firm that charging us this amount of money. I understand that we should have been also watching what we're doing, but that to hold their hands as we work through here doesn't make a lot of sense to me, especially if we're asking for an expertise of this law firm to know how to work with governments and how we deal with, with union negotiations. That's just, that's a huge flaw on their part.
I, personally, I just believe that because of what happened with the lawsuit and the urgency of getting everything done with that, that lawsuit was filed, and there was a sense of urgency to get it done because we were coming up on that July 1st deadline, and I'm not, I'm not trying to relieve anybody of the responsibility, but there was a...
But what about...
All-hands-on-deck type of approach to get this thing done so, so that, you know, we could, we could move forward with our, with the layoffs. And we, and we engaged this law firm to do that for us. Yeah, we should have known, they should have notified us. I mean, you could have put a burden on both sides, but we did ask them to do it, and it was above and beyond what we originally contracted them for. So, I, I just, I, I think...
Would this council have an appetite to maybe come in and ask them for at least half?
I mean, we can ask the city attorney what the negotiations were. I would assume that, that they've negotiated this down as far as they think they can.
We did this with ADP.
John Kammack, the city attorney, we did approach them with that approach. We did, that was our, our hope. That's why we took this on as a special thing to try to get a reduction. We said we would do it at the last, at that meeting when you rejected the 172. We discussed it with them, we discussed it, and this is what we made a, trust me, we asked for a lot more than what we got. This is what they came back with, which was the 40,000 plus the $10,000, five and five in additional services for free. And like I said, 10,000 of the 172 was something we owed anyway, regardless. So, we're down to technically, if you want to look at value, we're down to 111,000 roughly, or 112,000. But we, no, we've had that discussion with them. This, they came back, and we bantered back and forth, Ms. Chase and I, and Mr. Richardi bantered back and forth.
Well, I don't regret that decision, and, and because we're actually saying this, saving the taxpayers $50,000 right now.
No, can I, I think there was discussion, too, and I would agree that while we did ask them to do the extra work, there is some culpability on their part as well to make sure that they're, that they know they have a contracted amount. And didn't they also agree to put some provisions in with the new contract to assist us in making sure that, you know, when we might be pushing up against the cap?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Yes, absolutely. We put it in writing in the new contract. They provide to me personally, and I oversee the contract, a where we are every week on their billing and what the remaining amount is on that contract. And so, every Tuesday, I get an email with that information.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm having a difficult time...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm having a difficult time with this on several, from several perspectives. I do think it's a short runaround, the six-sevenths vote. I do believe that, and I think that's a pattern that we've gone down. I also have real problems with the qualitative staff report we were giving today. We weren't given a copy of the contract for us to look at what the dispute resolution provisions are in the contract. We're being told some lofty legal theory that we've never heard before. I think that is a problem. I also, I accept the comments of staff that procurement, serious procurement errors were made, and I accept, I can't say that I feel that the true accountability where the faulty wires were in what departments, we're among departments and levels of individual, but it was very serious. But I do believe that there is a commitment to do, to not do this again, and I certainly hope so. But, so I am having a hard time with this on several, from several aspects. Maybe you could, Madam Deputy City Attorney, tell me about the dispute resolution provisions, or even put it up on the screen, because that's something I did mean to ask for in the interim, and I just, I never got a copy of that contract.
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office. I can put it on the screen, or I can provide it to you both. Let me go ahead while I have it in hand, provide it to you before I walk over there. In the contract that was entered into, the attorney's fees provision says, should either party commence any legal action or proceeding against the other based upon the agreement, the prevailing party shall be entitled to award a reasonable fees and costs. So essentially, what that would mean with this dispute is if they prevailed, the City of Reno would also have liability for attorney's fees and costs. There is an arbitration provision in the contract as well. That is based upon, if any claim or controversy arises, that if both parties agree to it, then it could be submitted to arbitration. Whether or not they would agree, we did not approach them on that, because we did negotiate a reasonable settlement that we felt was in the best interest of the city, given the liability under the theories. The theory of quantum merit is a longstanding legal theory, and it is based upon common law, contract law, and practitioners use this all the time. It is not an unknown theory. It is a theory that we would likely get sued on.
But let me ask you one other question, because I know you go to the specific language of the contract. Is there something in there about no verbal representation outside of the contract? This is sole and part, the contract is what the contract is, because I do get a sense that there was some green lighting and a verbal nature from someone, somewhere, and that was not the will of the council. The will of the council was solely on the contract, and that's a standard provision. Was there anything like that in there? That this contract is solely the sum of the contractual relationship?
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office. There is a provision that indicates that any modifications of this agreement will be effective if they're in writing and signed by the parties. That is what I believe you are referring to. And that a modification to this agreement, yes, but that does not preclude a lawsuit over quantum merit when we, as a city, requested those services.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, real quick, too, just to clarify the record, just on one of the comments Councilwoman Brekis made, I just want to clarify the record, there was no green lighting to go over the contract by staff.
Was no verbal representation that we'll bring it to council, it's going to council?
No, there was not.
Sure, sheer accounting kind of failure of where we're at on this dollar amount.
A time, a time-tracking, you know, error. You know, we were not tracking their time, as Ms. Chase is tracking now. I mean, they're tracking it on a weekly basis. We were not doing that before.
And, Mr. Mayor, it's general business practice, at least in my 35 years, that when you're contracted with someone and you are given a specific request to take on some additional business, you perform to that request with the reasonable assurance that the client, in that case, that would be the City of Reno, understood they were asking for additional items, and it's reasonable on their part to expect that they would be paid for those additional services. That's very, very customary. Now, it's incredibly unfortunate that both parties, both the law firm as well as the city, didn't immediately come back and identify where is it going to come from and what is the estimated cost. And for that, I believe that we do share in the responsibility. We had as much responsibility to ask that of the firm as they did of us. The difference that I see between this overage and the ADP, if I'm remembering right, so help me here, this was a request of entirely new work, new performance, that had not been identified when we entered into that contract with them initially. For ADP, my memory is, they just entirely misinterpreted the breadth of what they were going to have to do for us, and therefore had to put in a whole lot more time. That was not our responsibility, that they misinterpreted what was involved in getting all of the nuances that had to go into that payroll system. So I see it as being pretty significantly different. Am I remembering that correctly? That it was just their inadequate interpretation of what it was going to take for them to get the job done? Not that we changed the conditions of the job with them at all?
Robert Chisel again for the record. Yes, you are correct on your recollection on ADP.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman, the only thing I would add, and I just want to make sure the record is clear on this, the overage on the Fisher &amp; Phillips contract was not solely due to work that we asked them to do in regards to the lawsuit or other things. There were, and, you know, I think we've said this before, there were overages that would have occurred even without that. So I just want to make sure that the record is clear on that. That was certainly part of it, but the other part of it was, you know, us not tracking it the way we should have.
If I can just add, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mr. Delgado.
Quick comment, I think Councilwoman Shivi had something that I can possibly stomach, and that's if the rest of the council has the appetite for. As we go back, and we've all pretty much clearly stated that there's a shared responsibility there, and if you can go back at a 50% markdown from what they gave to us, that's possibly something that I would hope that we possibly think about. Outside of that, I feel that that's still, it's still unreasonable in many different ways on how this was handled. And for further, you know, I can't imagine how, I know the last contract we worked with them on, but it's just going to make it a lot more harder for me to continue working with the group that won't possibly look at us and think about that they had to share responsibility in that and splitting that thing into 50%.
Mr. George?
No, I guess my, I could, I could kind of agree with that, except that a large portion of what the overage was, was due to something that wasn't a customary request for them. It was something that was outside of the norm, and we were asking them to perform work under a very tight timeline. I kind of feel at this point, you know, they performed the work that we, that we asked of them. They have negotiated in good faith and negotiated a significant reduction in the bill. You know, I certainly don't want to be known as the council that doesn't pay its bills, nor do I want to expose the council to, you know, any sort of potential, you know, litigation or anything with regards to a bill. So I heard from the City Attorney's Office that they negotiated as hardened as much as they could, and, I don't know, I kind of feel like we asked them, 90,000 of it, I believe, the last accounting was for the defense of the IAFF?
Robert Chisel again. The breakdown in June was about $80,000 of the expenses occurred in June. I don't have the exact numbers, how much was negotiations versus the IAFF lawsuit, so I don't have that in front of me right now. A lot of work went into that IAFF lawsuit, once it was filed. I mean, I really, I mean, and the fact that we had them in court for a full day, a couple of attorneys, and the expenses up here, I've got to believe that that IAFF case was a pretty significant portion of the overage.
And what bothers me about that is, yes, the IAFF lawsuit may be a part of the overage, but that was not in the scoping authority of the contract. And so we went out of that, someone went out of that. And I guess, Councilwoman Burzadra, I think that your distinction is troublesome for me in that you say, well, ADP was an overage because it wasn't scoped well. That, to me, is more forgivable than staff contracting outside of their authority that we have, that we reserve. And so that's why this is so problematic for me, and broadening the scope. No, we brought back this scope.
Let me correct you. We didn't improperly scope the duties needed for the ADP contract. It's that they didn't interpret the detail and the workload that they would have to take on to fulfill our scope. We never changed our specifications.
Yes, and I understand that, and it, either party, it wasn't scoped well. But on this, and we even brought this contract back and talked about what the role was going to be with the City Attorney's Office and with this attorney. And then when the IAFF lawsuit flared up, we just went to them as our go-to people, which may be just a bigger reflection of all of our resource poverty that we have to handle the complex issues that we have. But I think, to me, if you're talking about contracting overages, this one is almost more problematic, because it's staff taking on authority that should be reserved by the council.
I disagree. I don't think, I don't think anyone went outside the scope of the contract. I think it was work that wasn't anticipated within the 300,000. It wasn't outside the scope of the contract itself, but when we got the bid for the $300,000, this work wasn't anticipated in that proposal. We were well within, I think staff was well within the confines of the work being done within that contract, but it just wasn't anticipated. With that, Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
I would like to move to approve the settlement agreement that's in front of us with Fisher &amp; Phillips.
Do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Show the vote.
No.
Show the vote, four, three.
Five, two.
Five, two. Five, two, okay. Five, two. Now let's move on to J. 3. Oh, here comes my trolley.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council. Staff has, had been requested to come and give a presentation on the pavement preservation program, as well as how projects are selected regionally, and then also to have a discussion of the proposed 2000, or fiscal year 16, program of projects, street and highway program of projects. I just wanted to begin this conversation by discussing the process of the program of projects, street and highway program of projects that we're going forward. The Regional Transportation Commission Board will be seeing the program of projects at their September, I believe it's the 19th, meeting. The projects will be discussed and hopefully approved. At that point, they'll have approved document. That'll then come back to the council in October. So today, we're just talking about the proposed program of projects as has been prepared to date. This is a subject near and dear to my heart. Twenty, over 20 years in pavements, 25 years counting my, or before that even, and the whole discussion about, that may not be intuitive to most, which is how we handle our pavements and what is most important. Just some data for you, regional roads versus the regional transportation, or regionally significant roads. We've got about 1,500 lane miles, so about 30% of our system are what is considered our major roads, arterials, collectors, industrials. The remaining 70% of our roads are more of our residential minor collector roads. The graph to your right shows vehicle miles traveled. Now, we don't include the interstate mileage on our graph to the left, but it gives you an idea of overall vehicle miles traveled in Washoe County, the breakout. So about 42% interstate miles, again, about 50%, though, more than, or half of the roads, more than the interstate vehicle miles traveled are on our arterials, and then around 8% for the residential roads. As we look at the distribution of roads, what you'll see here is that for total region, City of Reno has about 46% of the lane miles. Washoe County, 32. Sparks, 21%. But when you look at the actual RTP, or regionally significant roads, Reno has 61%. And that's not too surprising, because we have a large portion of the population, and that's why we would see a larger component of that. You'll notice that, on the other hand, Washoe County has about 15% of those regionally significant roads, and yet, when you look at the local road, roads, those are the more the residential, and those that are not on the, on the regional significant roadway, you can see that Washoe County is actually equal to Reno, about 40%. This is tabular form, so I'm a picture, I like to see pictures, look at the graphs, but if you like tabular forms better, this gives you an idea, again, about 5,000 lane miles for the, for the region. So pavement preservation, what is that? So what you do when you look at the roadways is, you want to keep your good roads good. That's where you get the biggest pain for the buck. So if we go out there and we look at the preventative maintenance, the bottom one on this item, you're looking at 20, 50 cents per square foot for your maintenance of those. You do it more often, but you keep the roads in very good shape. When you start seeing a breakover in a curb, and we'll look at that curb in a moment, your costs go up significantly, and when you get down into the rehab or reconstruction, it's a much more significant cost. On a project selection basis, there is a manual, and I could certainly provide this to the council, but there's a policy put together for how the street and highway program is put together, and then as part of that policy, there are three separate programs. There's a preventative maintenance program, a corrective maintenance, and then a reconstruction. And the discussion in there about how those roads are selected. Those programs were put into place to really take the politics out of, if you will, who's getting what in terms of the roadways, and really put it into looking at the region roads altogether. I would emphasize that the RTC, Regional Transportation Commission, they do not have any ownership of the roads. The roads are actually owned by Reno Sparks and Washoe County, yet the funding source goes to them, and I guess we refer to them possibly as a referee then, on how those roads, on how those funds are spent across the region. We look at, one thing we had to institute as a region, we had to put in a pavement condition index, so basically knowing what all of our pavements and what they look like, so we can compare them one against the other. And then, of course, we're looking at the classification, arterials, collectors, those types of things. And then we look, once we have all that information together, we look at what's the appropriate treatment for those roads. And this just goes, again, to some of the background information on how we handle that. Again, we want the right treatment at the right time for the right price. You'll see here for 2012, 2013, we had a significant investment, so 14.7 million in Reno, 3.3 in Sparks, 5.2 in Washoe. Those numbers vary from time to time, but they stay pretty consistent over the amount of lane miles that we showed earlier. You'll notice in 2014, much less funding going in. So just, not unlike what the City of Reno performed with our roads, where we did a accelerated program, and then, or now have lower funding because we're paying off the bond, but did that during the recession, hoping for a shorter recession instead of a longer, RTC did something very similar. So they put a lot of money up front in getting the roads to a very high level, which means less, less money available now for some of these programs. Again, corrective maintenance, similar idea, 2012, 2013, and what was going in 2014. And then, again, a few pictures here. Here's the overall graph I was talking about. Your roads stay good for a period of time. They start to decline slower, on a slower scale. As the time goes out, they start accelerating and, or decelerating in the value, I should say, and then they get to a point where, you know, they fail, basically, and they stay there for a long time. Our job is to make sure we get in there and get the, do the best treatment early on, so keep our good pavements good. The costs for the poor pavements, when they get down to that point, are such that you basically put up with them as long as you can, because you're going to put that cost in one time, and you're stuck with that cost. Look at the impact of RTC 5 and bonding. So in 2008, again, we're speaking to the accelerated program, we had 185 lane miles with a pavement condition index below 55, and now what we're looking at is going And now what we're looking at is going forward by 2011, we look about 17 miles annually for reconstruction, lane miles for reconstruction going from 2012 on. Here's just a quick look at the network condition. The regionally significant roads, RTP, those, the amount of good and fair, obviously, very, you know, exceptional. That's where we want to be with all of our pavements. If you look at all regional roads, they're slightly below that. And that's just because the local jurisdictions, we have the residentials, less traffic. We have roads that are in poorer shape. And then just a comparison to the Bay Area. These were slides that I received from the RTC in a presentation they'd given their board last May. Now, I apologize for this, coming into this chamber last week and looking at presentations and knowing that you're looking at a screen and you're trying to see this I chart. I know that that's going to be very difficult, but this is, these are the proposed projects for fiscal year 16. I did provide this also in your, in this line item. And in that, I'd like to point out that... Have the overhead. And this isn't much better in terms of IHR, but if we could kind of zoom in a little bit on this. Okay, hopefully that's, you can kind of see that. But what I wanted to show is, and this is also included in your packet, is that funding source line. So as you come through and you look at that in the middle, about the middle column, you'll see a funding source, RTC fuel tax, RTC sales tax, federal enhancement, those types of things. It will show you, again, where that funding is coming from. So we can go back to the presentation. Technology gray. All right, there we go. All right, so this is the program going forward, what's proposed right now, pavement preservation. Again, it's a pretty low funding for that, and I have a recommendation for that. We have the ADA projects that are ongoing. We have a lot of money set aside in here for future for Fourth and Prater. There's a large project there. They're looking at $14 million. That's the bulk of the funding in this year's program for this corridor improvement program. We have bike and ped. And then we also have Start With A Design for Virginia Street Corridor Improvements. Again, I apologize for the small font here. It did include it in your package, so hopefully you can see it there a little easier. There's monies that have already been appropriated. And again, that, the other document I showed on the overhead will show that. But we have things like Pyramid McCarron, we have the Southeast Connector, and then we have some traffic management and traffic spot intersections. But those are generally what's on the proposed program. What I wanted to show, and at least in my recommendations, is in short term, we're generally in agreement, and I want to stick a little bit more closely with the pavement preservation. We're in agreement with what's proposed, even though it's a lower amount of funding right now, in context with all the projects that have been done over the last few years. We understand that. And those were decisions that were made, and we can appreciate, and we can afford to go a couple of years or so with lower funding in those programs. Recommendation I would make is I'd like to see a cash flow analysis. I'd like to see something going out 10 years that shows an emphasis on funding those ongoing maintenance, that pavement preservation. Those are the most, and to me, those are the most important things we do. Let's make sure the stuff, the roads that we have now, that we continue to maintain those well. And that's actually also in the transportation plan, and it shows that funding. I want to make sure that we continue funding the ADA transition plan. RTC has come up with that transition plan. They've shown areas of deficiencies and are showing that funding. We want to make sure that gets continued. And our other recommendation would be that we continue funding the multimodal, meaning as we go through and do pavement preservation, that we're looking at more than just lip of gutter, lip of gutter. So those are generally the recommendations that I would make. Also would like to show, if I can get the overhead again. These are, these are the 2013 through 2017. There's another list for the next five years and then for the next 10. But this is part of the 2035 Regional Transportation Plan. But you'll notice in here that they are showing those first few programs in purple. It's at the top of the page, so I'm assuming they also look at that as being a system, a priority. A million a year for ADA accessibility, a million a year for ped and bikes, 2.6 for traffic signal and operations and intersection improvements. And then again, that 18.7 million a year for pavement preservation. And I just like to see cash flow analysis after a few years. My recommendation that we look for that so we can see that we're actually putting that emphasis in our pavement preservation. And then, of course, we have debt service, they're showing 25 million a year for those five years. But anyway, that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Mr. Flansburgh, thank you for that presentation. Tell me this, what does the Reno Master Plan say about any of these projects? Or essentially, you know, about our, you know, these recommendations you make about kind of the mix of where funding is? What does our Reno Master Plan say about our community values for our transportation system?
The, I know that the Regional Transportation Plan is...
Reno Master Plan, our document.
I understand. But I also know that the Regional Transportation Plan is looked into as far as the regional plan. I don't know specifically, I haven't reviewed that document in a little while. I don't know specifically how that fits in to what your question is referring to.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and I don't fault you in any way on that because I don't think it is a very reliable document or has been used as a template for what we want to feed into the regional plan. But I think, you know, we are on record of saying we want to create that vision for how our community is built. And that was something our manager mentioned a little while ago as one of our priorities. But I would take a step to say that very little of where the money is being spent reflects something that the city councils come together to say, this is how we want to rebuild our community beyond pavement. I'm talking about all street users. That value is in there a little bit, not just pavement condition, but the safety and benefit for all users. But that's a comment. A little more questions I have is RTC, I guess the second slide you showed up on the mix, the road mix, if we could get that second slide? And I had a black and white copy and was having a hard time over the weekend looking at it. But, so of all the region's lane miles, how many are local? What percentage is local, both in Reno and the region?
Right, so again, if you're looking at a total region, Reno has about 46% of the roads.
No, but what's the makeup of local roads? If you get all, maybe it was on the next slide, actually. Okay, so of all, you're showing it vehicle miles traveled.
Well, on the right, and then on the left, we're showing lane miles.
But no, I mean like inch per inch pavement, what percentage of the network is local roads? Did you show us that?
70%.
70%. Okay, so 70% of the region's roads are local.
Correct.
Now, RTC five was voted on in 2008 and created a, just a tremendous funding source to address our community's transportation needs. What percentage of local roads are eligible for those RTC five dollars?
I would say 100%.
So we've been doing and using all that?
I'd say if you're looking at what's eligible, I'd say 100%.
But what is being used?
I'd say generally through the program, it's more, it's closer to that 30%.
30%. So we created this great big funding pot of money, and it's only being used on 30% of the road miles. Why is that?
It's also being used for capacity improvements.
Capacity improvements. But when you say we want to maintain the existing system, the existing system is this 70% of roads, and we're not using it, we're eking out $2.1 million out of our little budget every year to use on that percentage. So I think we are not using our road dollars as efficiently as we could.
I think that, again, I think 100% of those roads would be eligible. It's how they're chosen and the condition and what's the right choice in terms of the treatment. But again, that's talking about more pavement preservation. The overall program is bigger than just pavement preservation. It's about those capacity, where we're seeing the capacity needs. It's about, it could be transit. When you look at the program of projects, it's much more broad than just the pavement preservation portion.
So that document you showed there on the policies, all the local roads can come in under the pavement preservation, the small part, and they can come in on the RTC five funding eligibility? All our local roads?
I don't remember there being any restrictions to that. As part of the street and highway program and the criteria, there's a 5,000 ADT is what's been used as the criteria or the cutoff for what's considered to be an RTP road versus a local road.
And of those 70%, 70% local roads, how many max out to 5,000 ADT?
I don't have that information.
Okay, that's where we need to go, is we need to start spending our money on our local roads, this RTC money. When I found out, as someone who voted in 2008 on RTC five, and I've talked to other people, that 70% of the roads are not being used for that pot of money, or that pot of money is not being used for 70% of, on 70% of the roads. It's just a big surprise. And what is RTC five bringing? Are we paying 24 cents a gallon for every gallon tax right now going to RTC?
They're nodding their heads, yes.
So 24%, 24 cents out of every gallon we buy is not being spent on 70% of the roads in this region.
29 cents.
29 cents. That sounds, that's mind boggling to me. That is a priority that I feel needs shifting. As I look at how your group struggles to maintain the quality of our street network, which is totally lumped on us, on our general budget, not on this RTC five.
And remember, we maintain 100% of the Reno roads.
Yes, so why aren't we advocating for that change through this program?
We have advocated for some changes.
I think your representative on the RTC board can do just what you said. The RTC board's the one that does it, and that's the cities of Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County that govern it. So those are the ones that make the decisions, not us.
Mr. Mayor, can I comment to that as a member of the RTC board, along with Sharon Zadra? We have broached this subject to RTC. We believed it was an issue that needed to be broached from all entity jurisdictions with a united voice. And that was compromised at a prior meeting. And we now have to recircle the wagons to, as representatives from Washoe County, from Sparks, and from Reno, we did not want it to appear as though Reno had hat in hand asking for assistance just for the City of Reno. We believed it was something that representatives from Washoe County and Sparks may also want to have this discussion as well. So it is something we have discussed. I believe we will continue to discuss it. Those conversations, however, did stop at a previous meeting. And I'm forgetting right now what halted it, but something occurred and we stopped the discussion, if I remember correctly, Sharon.
Yeah, and I'm not remembering why as well, but it has been approached. And John, I'm not sure if the distinction that you were trying to illustrate early on, and it actually relates to this slide, is what is the road? The pavement index obviously monitors the condition of the roads, the actual condition, not the total lane miles. So that 70%, those roads get how much more traffic, percentage wise? How much more traffic than Reno streets, our residential streets?
Well, as shown in the vehicle miles traveled, you're showing 8% versus 50% for the local roads versus the arterials. Now, this item is, it's looking at the vehicle miles traveled in the whole region. So that's why the interstate, the green on the map there is showing up in its 42% because obviously a lot of vehicle miles traveled go through the interstates. But it just shows that actually more of those miles are actually on arterials. So what, the reason the 30% is in there, and those are considered the regionally significant roads, it has that 5,000 ADT or more. So those are going to be the roads that we expect to see the most traffic on. And those roads are in exceptional condition. They are really in good shape. It was because of part of the accelerated program that occurred previously. And so that's why I'm saying I'm not concerned immediately, over the next two, three years, perhaps, that we don't put as much money back into the preventive maintenance. But I would like to see that 10-year cash flow analysis and kind of see that we're making that the priority, as again, as it's stated in the Regional Transportation Plan. Not asking for, advocating for anything different that's in the plan. Just would like to see that focus. And I think a 10-year cash flow analysis would help that overall discussion.
And is that a reasonable expectation, the 10 years that you've identified?
Oh, absolutely.
Incurrent?
We do the same thing with our sewer fund and street fund. We put those cash flow projections together so we know, you know, we don't want to have any surprises. And just like, we're going to have large projects come up from time to time. They're going to be a resource drain. We expect that they may happen for a few years, but we want to make sure that we're staying keeping our good roads good.
And are our roads in any better or worse than City of Sparks?
I couldn't say specifically if you want to compare our local roads and their local roads. We have some of that information. Last time I looked at it, we were slightly ahead of, on the overall average PCI. But we do, we are underfunded in streets. We recognize that we have a significant shortfall. We're analyzing that. Again, we did the accelerated program. We're about $2, $2.5 million a year for the next several years. In 2019, we're going to bump that up by about $6 million or so, and it's going to go to, you know, $8.5, $9 million a year. We're in the same kind of boat there. But our overall needs are probably closer around $14 million a year.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment. I just, I think it's important that we don't discount the importance of these capacity improvement projects, too. I mean, I know it's a balance. We've got to figure out how to take care of both. But these capacity improvement projects are critical. I mean, they're critical to economic development. They're critical to our ability to bring, I mean, even the possibility of a Tesla or something like that here. You know, I don't want to discount the importance of those at all. I mean, as we look at this. I mean, I know there's a balance, and we've got to figure out how to take care of both. Because if you're not taking care of your neighborhoods, that's not good for economic development either. So, but it is critical. Those, the projects that we've done, the capacity improvement projects and the ones that are planned are critical to this community.
I do not disagree. And I'm not making any recommendations that are already part of the plan that's in there. However, what I would, on the 10-year cash flow analysis, I think that'll help us get a, you know, so we're leveling out, we're seeing the big picture long term. I also think that as we have more information come into the transportation model, it'll show us where those bottlenecks are and where those cash programs, and the timing of when we need to do those projects, which is important.
Ms. Jordan?
I have a question on some of the capacity projects. When we do have one of the major capacity projects, let's take these spaghetti bowl improvements. And then there's the need, which I know is being discussed now. This is kind of a general question, and maybe Lee can answer this. And right now, we have brought to the top of the discussion the need to have the improvements of the I-80 eastbound to the I-580 southbound. How does, how does the redo of something like that, how does that get funded?
Mr. Mayor, for the record, Lee Gibson, Regional Transportation Commission. Councilwoman Jordan, that's a very good question. We have a cooperative planning approach, framework required by federal law. We work very closely with the Nevada Department of Transportation under the benevolent eyes of the Federal Highway Administration. And projects that go on the I-80, I-580 system are projects that get developed jointly with us, with the NDOT. We go through the environmental process, planning process, environmental process, and design process. We will, if need be, and I've said this on the record at RTC, and I'll say it here, you know, we need to be very mindful of the fact we have no federal transportation program that's growing in revenue. And given the facts of this state, we can expect more of the NDOT funds to probably flow to the South. So we're going to have to look at more joint development and capacity projects, as Councilman George referred to earlier. Because during his tenure of RTC, we dealt with a 580 issue. We dealt with a joint funding arrangement with the NDOT and widened the freeway over Plum to Mill Street with both of our funds. So a long answer back to a short, maybe short summary. We work very closely with NDOT. We, as a metropolitan planning organization, RTC, we set those plans and really help set the priorities and then work with them and move forward through implementation.
Okay, so it's the RTC that, if you have a capacity, a couple of major capacity projects that are 20 years out, but you need to start them now, I understand that. But we identify at the RTC that maybe the improvements to that intersection on ramp needs to be the priority. We're the ones at RTC that set that.
That is absolutely correct. We're the metropolitan planning organization. We get to pick the urban priorities for this region, period.
Okay. And the other thing, there was a slide up there about Evans, but I think it was a different Evans. The Evans by the university, where that housing development, student housing just went in. There's students walking down the middle of the street because there's no sidewalk on the east side.
I think we're reconstructing that. Yeah, that's under... Yeah, that's under, yeah, that's under work right now.
Oh, okay, okay. Dwight mentioned that he saw a number of students walking down the middle of the street rather than going on the sidewalk on the west side.
You would assume they would walk on the west side where the sidewalk is, but no, they chose to walk up the middle of the street on the east side.
Talking about college kids.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, on that point, and I do want to address ADA, our region's commitment to ADA and filling in the ADA network, which is good for the disabled folks who are protected under that civil rights legislation, but all street users, college students who are able-bodied. I was up at TMCC for the start of their semester on Monday, seeing students walk along Dandini, no sidewalk on either side of the road, but then on the backside, seeing a nice little splinter kind of configuration that we put in with, to make the ease of motorists over there. But we're just spending $600,000 a year and filling in our street ADA obligations. I came to the RTC board when they had their kickoff for their budget meetings this year and said, "We are not doing enough for ADA and our commitment to that." And I've been seeing a number of correspondence between your staff and the disabled community who seem rather unhappy that you are not doing, at least on the bus system, not meeting their needs. Where is our commitment? Have we been increasing our commitment to the ADA obligations that we have?
Okay, again, I'll try to keep this short. We have our regional transportation plan, we have an ADA transition plan that was developed in part with the bicycle and the pedestrian plan. And if my memory serves me correct, and it does fault me sometimes, I believe when we approved that, I believe the city council approved it, and Commissioner, Councilman Dorch, I believe you were on RTC during that time period. During the RTP, we kind of looked back at that plan, and we agreed to $1 million a year at a minimum to ADA transition projects. In 2014, we have spent $1.5 million. So we are right now ahead of the game, if you will, and ahead of plan, if you will, with respect to our ADA transition plan. Our annual performance report shows that we were to be at the 3%. Over 20 years, you'll get 3% of it done, we're at about 5% right now, if you go back and look at that report that was presented to RTC in April of '13.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I would say 5% is not robust enough, in light of the resources that were given to, by the taxpayers, 29 cents out of every gallon to RTC for our transportation network. And that brings me back to the big one, which is, how much have you bonded since you received the RTC 5 vote?
We have right now, I believe it's about $135 million this year for capacity improvements from bonded proceeds. Bond proceeds account for 11% of our cash flow. We have about $158 million a year in revenue, so our principal and interest is about 11% of our total revenue. And that's where we are. Much of that is going to a number of capacity improvement projects, including the Southeast Connector. That was a decision by the RTC back about four years ago, to move that project forward and sell that fourth bond with the RTC 5 money. The amount of money that was programmed for ADA transition improvements was a number that was arrived to and agreed to and approved by the RTC in April of last year, when the RTP was approved, and that was based upon public input that we received. And Councilwoman Brackus, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, you know, we all agree there needs to be more money, but as Councilman Dorch has said, and as my two bosses here have said, we have to balance the needs and look at capacity projects and look at all of these things. Our ADA, I'm very proud, we're above our minimum right now, and I think that's good. With respect to the transit system, and I apologize, I owe you an email in response to this, but we are moving forward with the voice recordings to improve the voice information on our bus system. We're doing about half a route a day now, and we're going to bring that up to speed. And we are looking at ways to move bus stop accessibility forward. I've said many times, bus stop accessibility and sidewalk accessibility, actually, I'll put money back in the RTC's bank account, because we spend about $25 a ride on access for paratransit eligible customers, and those are customers who, had they had, had they had an accessible pathway to get to a bus stop, we wouldn't have to transport them. Because that's the way the ADA works. If you can get to an accessible stop, you're good to go. You can use the fixed route system, and there's a lot of folks like that. So we're moving forward, and I think, you know, it's a planning process that we work deliberately to work towards achieving a multiplicity of goals.
And I would add to that, as a member of the board, that there has been discussion for the increased need that we have in our community for the ADA services. And we have had discussion quite liberally at the board about potentially, when we get through some of these liabilities that are existing, when we get through some of those, to potentially look at that 1/16th of ascent and transfer that over to the paratransit needs. And just with that being introduced, the eyes of the construction industry got huge, and they're, of course, very concerned about that. But we, as a community, will need to, and that is advancing. We've had multiple public meetings that have been very well attended. Some of us have even gone down and looked at the operations in the southern part of the state. We were there in March, I think, taking a look what they were able to do, private industry, although it started through their RTC. And another commissioner, Weber, went and looked at some similar operations down in Southern California. The board is on it, we are not in a position that we can add a substantial increased amount of money to it until we get through some of these liabilities, but we're ahead of target right now. That's really critical, and we are working on advancing it.
Councilmember Zadra, when you mention liabilities, what are you talking about?
Projects. And I would assume that if we're going to call these projects liabilities, I would call them, you know, things we want to build in our community. But is one of those the Southeast Connector? It's a project that has not been done, not been able to get the approvals that it needs. You recently announced your agency, or heard from the Corps, that you will not, at the earliest, get an announcement or a green light, whether or not you're going to EIS by October. But my issue is that that project has been sitting on a bunch of money that you're paying $25 million of debt a year on. You're running huge cash-in balances upward of about $200 million, when I've read your CAFR. What's Plan B? And I keep, and the reason I'm going back is, I got on the RTC Citizens Advisory Committee in 2009, 2009, 2010, 2011, before I even considered running for city council. The word from your agency, I think it even comes before you, was Southeast Connector's getting done, getting done, getting done. I thought it was going to be in construction in June of 2009. And we're still sitting on all this money, and it's holding up other street and transportation needs being done, maybe even some of these big policy changes, so that we can start to spend 29 cents on the rest of the 70% of our transportation networks. So what's agreeable? Are we going to stay five more years and wait for the Southeast Connector to green light and keep $200 million in the bank? What's the plan there?
We don't need any sarcasm or anything, just ask your questions without the comments.
No, really, what is the plan?
Lee? I think part of the delay, largely the delay is due to the Army Corps.
Well, I know that, and I accept that.
Okay, okay.
That's given.
Okay, so for us to be able to have a crystal ball what the Army Corps may do, or how quickly they may do it, is just that, a crystal ball. We are doing everything possible to go back and lobby our congressional delegation. Four of us are going back in a week, because we hear there is some movement. So we want to ensure that we have the message about how important it is that the Army Corps make a decision on this. Because of the delay, it is representing with regards to the Virginia Street Bridge and a number of things that are now being all backed up. Because we can't determine and have a discussion about those dollars for the Southeast Connector until we have a decision from the Army Corps. So I agree with you that if the Army Corps comes back and says, "You have to have an environmental impact statement," and that's a solid year and a half out process, then we need to have that discussion about what other projects might we be able to plug in while that is being performed. But I think it's premature to be able to say that we can start doling out these projects now, when we could, in 30 days from now, have a decision from the Corps. At least that's some indications that we're getting.
But it's been 30 days for four years, and that's my issue, is, you know, are we going to wait another four years on hearing whether or not we need an EIR? I mean, what is our stomach in terms of not meeting the transportation needs that are mounting, because money's not being spent out? Is it another year, six months, nine months?
It seems that the board of the RTC is working with it, and you want to micromanage it, go over to the board or whatever.
No, I'm just wondering, what is the thinking on that?
Our thinking right now, Mr. Mayor, is we meet with the Corps weekly, we go through a number of issues. The clock is ticking with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and with the State Historic Preservation Officer. We have our programmatic agreement in front of ship now, that's being reviewed. We are working with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. There are no, the Corps' letter to Fish and Wildlife, I believe, used the phrase "no adverse effects to wildlife," so we feel pretty confident there. We're working with the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection on a couple of actions they do. I mean, I don't disagree with you, I mean, the Corps is the Corps. I mean, that's the way they are, but I think all indications I've had, and we have correspondence that shows this, we're moving forward, and Councilwoman Jardon is absolutely correct. Our Congress is allowed to observe, they are allowed to be informed, they've notified the Corps that they are observing and they are informed, and I believe the Corps is moving forward with due diligence, and I'm not going to predict when the permit's going to come, but I am going to predict that we are, I am going to tell you we are making progress, and it is a lot better than it used to be.
Well, one final question. Say it gets to next March, and you're starting to work on the budget for next year, would you, as the executive director, recommend to the board, you know, we still haven't heard from the Corps whether or not, let's reprogram this money to our other needs? Would you, where would you be on that, or have you given thought to that?
You know, I can't accurately predict, but I do tell what will happen in March, but I will tell you, RTC, and I think we all feel this way at RTC, we're always looking at the opportunities to flex schedules, to look at opportunities that may come up. We may have a big economic development opportunity arise that will require flexibility and creativity with the use of our funds. I know we are, Tesla was mentioned earlier, I know we actually are working on plans to make sure that should a major user of that site come to town, we want to have commuter bus service ready to go. And we've been working with our congressional delegation. So I think our planning process is really a contingency-driven process, we want to look at all opportunities, and we will always be flexible and try to take advantage of those opportunities and leverage our funds to the best we can. That's why we're pursuing a host of federal discretionary grants, such as the Tiger Grant and the Ladders of Opportunity Grant, because those opportunities are available, and we need to, you don't get anything, you don't go after, and that's kind of the approach we take.
Yeah, but Jenny, I do think, and as RTC board members, I think maybe that is something that we, as board members, should be having that discussion of, unfortunately bureaucracy is so well represented in this process with regards to the Army Corps, that we're seeing that their ability to just kick the can, and kick the can, and kick the can, and as much as you're frustrated, you should see us at the RTC. I mean, the frustration level is enormous, but I also think there's value in having that discussion, at what point do we start looking at, what can we be doing maybe with some of these dollars? So I think there's value in having that discussion with the RTC board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a motion, second? All in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, no, thank you very much. Now we jump to item K1, Board and Commission Appointments. There are none. One of my favorites. Now, future agenda items. Anybody got anything for the future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
As it relates to a public comment that we had earlier about the intent for the public exchange and participation that can be had in the Public Safety Forum, I'm wondering if we do need to have some clarity. And Mr. Manager, I certainly heard you invite people to take the survey, but I don't know that the council will take a survey. Maybe we could have just 10 minutes at our next meeting to kind of reiterate what we thought the expectations were, because I would agree with the public comment that we heard and the private communication that the one gentleman sent to us. I think that there was a different level of expectation, that it would be much more of a workshop as opposed to the three-minute cutoff kind of a procedure. And again, we've got public outreach as a priority, and we may not be totally embracing that with this particular, and really, it was your request for the, I'll call it a workshop, Nioma, if you want to pipe in on it, but I'm not sure we're hitting the marks on this one.
Well, Councilwoman, I mean, I would say, we're not anticipating that it's going to be, and Cadence can correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, I'm not anticipating that it's going to be, you get three minutes. It is going to be a workshop-style presentation, and that's part of the reason we brought that item to the last council meeting, was to get that sort of feedback from council on what you wanted to see at the forum sort of laid out. Here's where we're at, here's what we're thinking, and to get your input. So if there are, you know, if there's something different that you want us to do, we will need to get that direction from you.
But you will need some kind of time limit, so you'll have certain individuals coming in, trying to dominate it.
No, and I agree with that, and I think, and that's why we kind of tossed around the idea of, more than likely, we're going to have to have more than one, because I do see this kind of being two completely different animals, one being the more in-depth discussions with regards to public safety from a labor contract side, which Mr. Church was speaking of, and having those more in-depth discussions on that. And then there's the active shooter discussions, and the public wanting to know if someone comes in with a weapon into my business, what am I supposed to do? So I would agree, I think maybe the bite of the apple was so big that we're trying to figure out how we meet the needs of everybody, and I think we're going to have to have more than one.
Well, we can put that on the next agenda as you're talking, and we can discuss it at that point. Any other agenda items for future? Ms. Brackus?
I had a bunch on last week, that'll be on the next one, so I'm good, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for asking, though, Mayor.
All right. I wasn't used to that silence down there.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm being a smart addict. Any les on reports? Ms. Brackus?
None.
Ms. Zadra? Mr. Delgado? Mr. Dorch? Ms. Jordan? Ms. Sheevy? Reports of any conference and professional meeting? Okay, item L4, Ms. Brackus?
Resolution number 7999, resolution donating council donation funds to Solistry to provide programs, resources, and opportunities for children, teens, and families coping with grief in the amount of $500.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L5?
That was pulled.
Yes, L5 was pulled, I'm sorry. L6?
Okay, L6, and I don't know if we've ever done this before, but there was a constituent who wrote to me, I don't know if you all got it, you might have gotten it, too, and he was put into the Police Special Assessment District when we expanded it.
Individually, yes.
No, I don't think he came. Oh, did he come? Okay. But he later on followed up with some information that he felt we did not follow the legal instrument that we were supposed to. And I passed it on to staff, and the attorneys prepared a memo. I won't divulge the results of the memo, because the memo was marked with a big confidential, not for public disclosure. And the city attorney's office has said to us before that council can act as a body to unseal, if you will, legal advice. So I am asking that we take a vote to unseal this legal advice, so that we can show this person what our findings are, and I assume you all have read it.
And Mr. Mayor, I mean, on something like that, I think we would, I'd prefer an attorney-client meeting ahead of time, to hear the pros and cons of doing something like that. You know, typically, if it's under the veil of an attorney-client, it's because the attorneys feel that there's information in there that they didn't want the public to have, because of possible protest or lawsuits or something to that effect. So if we're gonna, if you want to put that, I mean, assuming that's, I'm assuming it's agendized to do that today, but I would prefer we had an attorney-client, so that we could at least hear from the city attorney as to the pros and cons of that move.
Why don't we schedule it for the next city attorney meeting?
Okay, I don't object to that approach. We've just never gone through this before, and so I didn't know, we don't have a procedure for this, so I won't object to that. I want to be responsive to this constituent, okay.
And the city attorney might not have an issue with this particular memo, I don't know, but I just, before I would vote on something like that, I would like, I'd just like to... to have that conversation.
That's fine. And you've seen the email, because you replied, you prepared the memo, correct?
That Tracy Chasen, you know, city attorney's office. Um, as a suggestion, when we prepare, uh, information and legal opinions for city council and their confidential, we put in there our analysis of issues. If you are requesting us to respond by letter to the public, we can do that, but that's a different scenario than just us responding to you. If that's what you're asking today, council member, is for us to go back and respond to that individual by letter separately, and that would be open, then we could create that document in mind as if we're responding to a citizen inquiry. That's a different analysis and a different, um, matter than attorney-client. In attorney-client, you want your lawyer to be very free to give you any information that they feel on pros and cons of, of matters. And so that's why they should be maintained as confidential, because if they open and that person, and I'm, I don't recall all the nuances whether, at this point in time, because I do so many issues going through, whether I felt there would be litigation on this, I'd have to look at it. But, um, if the attorney feels constrained that they can't provide you their honest and best analysis in a matter in a confidential opinion because it may be open, that's of concern. So our office always recommends if you really want us to look at something and do an open memo, that you ask that. And then when we create it, we will keep those matters, um, in sight. And then if we need an attorney-client meeting to say, whoa, be very careful here because we're going to have pending litigation, we can go through those processes, um, because you need your attorneys to give you their best legal and quality legal advice.
Okay, I just think we need some of this written down somewhere, that these are the policies or how we, how we do this, because it seems like every communication is big confidential. But if we want to bring this one in particular into closed session next time, then we can...
Or if, if she can just write a letter to the, that's not confidential, to the, to the constituent.
Well, why don't, why don't I do this, council? Because this is an L item, um, just give direction for us to either write a letter or if we believe it should come back in a closed session, we will look at it and use our best judgment and, and do that.
Okay. That's the motion then. Thank you.
What's the motion?
They're, they're going to either, they could, might write, just write a letter to the constituent as to what the issues were. If she feels she needs an attorney-client meeting with us, she'll call an attorney-client meeting.
Okay. Motion, second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Don't count, that's, that's over with. Now we go to the next, oh, I didn't say that. Now we go to item L3, Ms. Jordan?
L3?
L7?
It's L7.
I'm going back to that, this glance.
You're, you're close.
It's a little late in the afternoon.
Um, this was brought up the last time about doing, um, some sort of three-dimensional art on the train lid in between Whitney Peak and the Eldorado. Um, and I would just ask that staff maybe help facilitate a meeting with the arts and culture person of Regional Alliance for Downtown, who is Eric LaRue, and, uh, a representative, um, probably Cindy Carano from the Eldorado, and then the gentleman, I've lost his name, from Whitney Peak. Um, and, and maybe a contest, something similar that they did with Circus Circus.
Somebody that's got some art ability with them.
No, no, and that's what, no, I agree. And, and the head of our art division. And, and similar to like they did with Circus Circus, that contest, uh, on the murals. However, that came together, I know it was Rad that was kind of the driving force behind it, so.
Got a motion for that? Do I have a second?
Would this be a permanent improvement?
No, it's not. I, I wouldn't envision it as such. And, uh, again, it's, to me, the, the horrible DG on both sides of that gray concrete is, when there's not an event on the train lid, it's so incredibly ugly. And I just feel like it's a blank canvas that we could make a visually appealing contest, something interesting, a photo op even, if you've looked at some of the 3D concrete art, it's crazy amazing. And it could be something that even a special event, things could be on top of it.
And get with the university and talk with them.
Yeah, that's, I, I agree. However this comes together and whoever wants to be involved, I'm open to.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item M1 is a six o'clock hearing. Uh, will everybody be at the six o'clock hearing? Doesn't seem like...
I will not.
Or where are you going to be?
At dinner with my wife.
At dinner with your wife? That's a very...
Twenty years.
Twenty years of marriage?
Oh, congratulations.
Hey, hey! Congratulations. Can we show up and sing to you?
No.
You know, we could require her to be here and I bet she hasn't been there in twenty years.
Nineteen years?
Yeah.
Well, congratulations. That's super. I can't believe she's put up with you for 20 years.
I can't either.
I've only known you a few years, but I can't believe it. But I guess so. Anybody else we can roast? Hold on. This meeting will be adjourned until the hour of six o'clock?
Recession.
Will be recessed until the hour of six. You guys, you, you, terminologies, you're really, you know? Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given. We received one email in support, two letters of concern, and two letters in opposition.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. And, um, at this time, I have... I have four people that are in opposition, that do not wish to speak. We will enter their names into the record. At this time, I have... Six people that wish to speak, one in favor and the rest of them are opposition. If you start hearing yourselves repeating each other, please, if you would address or pass it to somebody else, we'd appreciate it. But I will call on Rich. Now, Rich, I got a bad accent. Can y'all laugh a little bit at that? Just because I talk like an East Texan. Rich Laverty? Was that close? Laverty? Jesus, I'm sorry, Rich. Come on up.
I start?
You're it. As you saw for the record.
My name is Rich Laverty and I have been a resident of Verdi for the past 10 years. I've taken an active role in community affairs as I am the most recent and past chairman of the now-defunct Verdi CAP. I'm an architect contractor and have managed development entitlements, uh, and other, and projects. I'm in favor of property rights, especially the right to develop one's property. What I see with the West Meadows project is a complete disregard for the years that the community spent in participating in the effort to zone the property, to respect the values of the Verdi community. What has happened in Verdi, when a new owner or existing owner of property doesn't like the Washoe County zoning, they annex to the city of Reno. Consequently, we have the tentacles of Reno spreading throughout our community. Once the annexation is done, the property owner comes to the city and asks for a density increase from the existing zoning, i.e. a special plan area or a PUD. I've been told that our city council member is very supportive of the highest densities you can get. Her reasoning is, I quote, "The city of Reno is broke. Why is it incumbent upon the citizens of Verdi to suffer from this development so the city of Reno can reap additional tax dollars to solve its problems? I submit to you, it's your problem, not ours." Yet at our expense, we have to expect huge increases to traffic, overcrowding at our schools, decrease in already less than, than adequate services, again, i.e. fire, police. And I, and I might remind you that we are in a drought season, limiting our water uses, and now we want to increase density. I understand the so-called deal has, has been struck, but I'm not in favor. The original county zoning was just fine. The master plan amendment indicates you have to make findings. Finding number three states, the amendment will provide for orderly physical growth of the city, enhance the urban core, and foster safe, safe, convenient, and blockable neighborhoods and shopping districts. Over 100 Verdi residents told the planning commission that we are a rural community. We don't want to promote the physical growth of the city, nor enhance the urban core. We are rural. Doesn't anybody listen? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The city is not broke, sir. I just thought I'd tell you that.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Powers. I've been a Verdi resident for 12 years. I have a, I had a different speech planned for tonight, but after some comments that I heard coming from fellow council members, I have chosen to educate the council on this council member. Since a lot of people like to give titles behind their name, I'll give mine. I do have a master's degree in business. I know what this project will bring to the city of Reno. The comment that was made is that Washoe County and Sierra County residents shouldn't be here tonight because our voices don't matter. We don't vote for you. That comment was very unprofessional and disrespectful for an elected official to make. Here's your education. Within a matter of a few minutes, mind you, with my 13-and-a-half-month-old son on my lap helping, I was able to post on all media sites, city of Reno website, and many other social sites about this meeting and project. Each one of us, Washoe County and Sierra County residents, have friends, family, coworkers, who all live within the city of Reno. And to top it off, I work for one of the largest nonprofit organizations in the world, of which there are 4,000 members in Nevada and 1,500 reside in the city of Reno limits. I've worked for this office for nine-and-a-half years, and I have the respect to back those people, um, to back me on this project. All these people I mentioned love Verdi for the peaceful and quiet community where we can sit outside at night and actually see the stars and hear the crickets sing. So I implore you council members to remember this as you consider this project as a whole. Listen to our concerns and respect us as a community. It has been said that Reno wants this project because they are broke and need money. I have heard that from another council member quoting it. Maybe the city of Reno is broke because they approve all these impossible developments and go, go into business with Cook and developers. The city of Reno needs to do financial background checks on these developers. This may help in the influx of empty commercial spaces with, within the city of Reno limits, there are many, and empty houses that sit. People say they are for this development because they've always dreamed of living in Verdi. Well, I've dreamed of living in Verdi all my life as well. It's a desirable community because it's quiet, peaceful, sits along the Truckee River. Once this development goes in, it will no longer be quiet and beautiful town where people desire to live. It will be like every other suburb in Reno, overrun by traffic, noise, and people. The city of Reno has a vision statement, and its vision is to have a city government that works to enhance our city's quality of life by listening and valuing the needs of the citizens. When we listen to the needs of our people and provide them with services and leadership they're asking for, then we have a city government that truly reflects the best qualities. And in the priorities you list, we believe in order to achieve this purpose and mission to provide safe and livable neighborhoods. Where's all the money coming from, from all the services? The fire department to man that donated truck? Where's the law enforcement? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Carl Adams, I'm a citizen of Reno. I've been here for 14 years and... I went all the way through them. Well, okay, good. I'm off to a bad start. Is there a way to back it up? There we go. Okay. TMA has asked its customers to reduce outdoor water usage by 10% to conserve drought resources, reserves. At the same time, a regional plan says we have enough water for 130,000 more people. How can both of these things be true? The answer is that they can't be true. The plan is based on water rights, but you can't drink rights. Let's look at real water. In August, I visited our reservoirs, which store the water that we need for the Truckee River. The Truckee River by, um, the way, it supplies about 75% of our water, and it's not something that you can, you know, replace with well water. So the first one I went was to Lake Tahoe. It's about nine inches about above its natural rim, and they predict that will fall below the rim and water will stop flowing from it. Then I went to Prosser Reservoir. It holds about 3% of our storage. In August, it was at less than 30% of capacity and water had virtually stopped running from it. Next, I went to Boca Reservoir. The water's supposed to be up in the bushes over there. Uh, it was at less than 30% of capacity and water had virtually stopped running from it. This is the outlet. You can see no water coming from it. Uh, then I went to Stampede Reservoir. It's got 21% of our total river storage and most of it is dedicated to wildlife preservation. In August, it was less than, at less than 30% of capacity and water had virtually stopped running from it. By law, the dams at Tahoe, Prosser, Boca, and Stampede must release enough water to maintain flows of 500 cubic feet per second, if water's available. But when I looked at the water at Floriston, it was running at about half of the required minimum, and this is a picture of what it looks like in downtown Reno. Donner and Independence Lakes, our emergency drought, drought reserves, only hold enough water for about four months of average use. We're only three years into a drought that could last for a decade and possibly headed for disaster. What will happen if we have light snow this winter and start next summer with reservoirs that are virtually empty? In 2008, 73% of voters approved valid question three, calling for a regional plan based on sustainable water resources. But the plan is still based on water rights. Water rights are useless if there's no water. I respectfully ask that you visit the reservoirs for yourself and see what's happening. I also ask that you not approve amendments to a plan which, in my opinion, is legally invalid because it does not represent the will of the people. It's time for us to have a real plan based on real water, sustainable water. It's time to stop playing Russian roulette with our water.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a disclosure of a extemporaneous nature? Uh, last week, on August 19th, I met Mr. Adams for the first time when, um, I met him through another Community Connection person who brought the two of us together and the three of us went to look at some of the reservoirs he mentioned. Um, the item that we are hearing tonight did not come up in conversation the three or four hours we spent traveling about looking at these reservoirs, but I presume that some of the photos that he showed tonight might have been from that trip. I don't know if they were from an earlier trip he made, but some of this, they may be. I don't know. But I just want to get that disclosure on the record. Thank you.
Well, I must disclose that I've been to Tahoe, Donner, and I didn't see some of the stuff that he's referring to, so.
I, I hate to argue with you, Mr. Cachell, but, uh...
You can argue with me.
I'm going to argue with you. I, I, I'm neither for or against it, and I think you put me against it. I think the plan is beautifully written, although I'm a little worried about one part of it.
Well, I am too, but Tahoe, Donner is not empty.
It's, I wasn't worried about the water. I figure you guys are going to take care of that. I have trust in you. What I'm worried about is the road coming in and out. We live in a small river valley. Uh, there's one road that bisects the valley. This development is going to be across the street from River Oaks Development. This is a one-half a mile section. There's a bridge on one end, two lanes, and a steep cliff, a rocky cliff, which has come down six times in the 12 years I've been there and blocked the road. It's on the other end, and across from that, there's the river, and there's no place to get around. If one car is blocking either one of those places, there's no way in or out. The plan's going to put a roundabout between the roads coming out of both developments right across from each other, and I'm worried about getting in and out of there if something happens. When we were coming in today, we went into a fire truck coming in while we were going out, and there's just enough room in that rocky section for the fire truck to come in and out. And what I'm... And what I'm suggesting is that you consider another road coming in there from somewhere to get us out. I don't care about the plan itself. I just want to get my wife and myself out, my grandkids, if they're there. Thank you for listening.
Hey, thank you. Now, Gideon, I'm really going to screw this up, so you got to help me out. I'm, I'm not being disrespectful, sir, but...
My grandmother would have said Kaplovitch. We say Kaplovits.
Thank you very much, sir. You help me out.
I am a homeowner in Verdi, and I'm here to express my concern over development and growth, particularly out in Verdi. And over the last several months, we've heard a lot about this particular development, and in the process have learned about the Mortenson-Garson development, which this is riding on its shoulders. And one of the things that's been of great concern is that it seems the way decisions are made are these are taken one at a time, and we're talking 320 houses, 400 houses, but this is on top of 600 houses that have already been approved. And so issues related to the school, issues related to water, all of the strains put on resources that you guys know all about, it's all in the Planning Commission, the whole thing, are just exacerbated by what seems to be somewhat of a lack of a unified Verdi area development plan, which seemed to have existed in, for Washoe County, but with annexation and the whole thing, doesn't really seem to exist anymore. And as we move forward, I implore all of you, particularly our Ward Five representative, to really keep our best interests in mind. And I think some people have mentioned this, you know, there's City of Reno and there's also Verdi, and we're the small folks, you know? We're in this uniquely vulnerable position of Sierra County and Washoe County and City of Reno, and, you know, we kind of need our Lorax to speak for us and keep our best interests in mind. As a father of a three-year-old, and I just found out literally today of a, what will be a newborn in a little bit over seven months, I'm extremely concerned about the schools and the overcrowding in the schools. And I understand one of the agenda items you guys are going to be hearing from today is about the desperate need for space in schools, and I'm tremendously concerned over where my children are going to attend school. And, you know, Commissioner Reno, when presented with some of the dire statistics about Washoe County School District, asked whether this development is the straw that's going to break the camel's back. And I don't know whether that's true or not. I know like Rufus, our neighborhood burrow, our back is strong, and it's a proud back. But looking forward, we've got 1,400 homes, I believe, in Reno. We've got 1,000 more now on the, on the table. I just don't know how much more our back can, can hold. And I think one of the lessons that we've learned since 2008 and the collapse of everything is that not all development is good, and overdevelopment can not only be a curse, but it can bring us to our knees. And I think, Councilman Bojardin, I, I think I heard you use the word sustainable, and I think that's something that should be a guiding message. And just last, I'd just like to take the last five seconds to thank both of you guys for listening to community input and altering the plan. I think because of this, it's a better plan.
Thank you very much.
And I think it just states how we can all get along.
Thank you very much. Fred Altman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here to represent Stan Lucas, who is the owner of the Mortenson Ranch, the contiguous property above this one that we're talking about this evening. And the concerns that we have are that the density is an issue. I've been a developer in this town for many, many years. You probably know of me. And I have a philosophy that a community really needs to be well-planned, well-thought-out, and it needs to really, really be agreeable with existing persons, the people that live in, in and around what that community is going to be. And I've been an advocate of, I, I went to all those CAB meetings back with Judge Hardesty in the old days and helped make that plan back then for, you know, the fights that went on with putting so many houses here and so many houses there in the future. Of course, a lot of that's blown up because of what happened with our economy. However, I think you have a great chance here to keep the atmosphere of Verdi alive. And I think by having a lot of density in any one particular spot, including the Mortenson Ranch, who those people, those owners are working to reduce the density, to make it more open space, I just think that this needs to be considered, and that, I think these comments tonight by these people that live in Verdi are, are very good and very sound. So I just challenge you to really think about where you're going with this. And I think the one thing that really rang a bell here was when the last person said, you know, "We need to think of this as a total little environment. It's a very unique place, and I don't know of too many places like this in and around Reno. I don't think we'll see this ever again. So let's think long range here and make this work for the benefit of all of us." There's a lot of people that go fishing out there, that do rides down the river. It's a scenic corridor. I mean, there's a lot of things that are very unique about this community. So when you do make a decision, think about these things. Thank you very much.
Mr. Altman, I need to ask you a question since I'm a resident of Verdi for 30 years. Which part of the Mortenson Ranch do you represent?
The Mortenson Ranch that, and I actually used to own it, is the 1,000 acres above this property.
Above the property, north of the property?
Yes.
Not above the river towards Boomtown?
No.
I thought so. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Fernhoff.
My name is Jim Fernhoff, and I want to first say I'm not associated with this project in any way. I do support the project as I, my home on multiple acres is on the west end of Verdi, and then I own a business on the east end of this project with over 50 employees. And I've been to all these different meetings, and I've even had a chance to exchange emails with Carla, who's opposed to this project, and I've, I've heard from many people, including tonight, about the prestigious Verdi. And I guess what concerns me, a quick drive-through Verdi, which I hope all you people will do, is that we first come into Verdi to run down trailer parks that have not kept up their landscaping, old, old trailers. We have a 6,000-foot office building on the Truckee River that's been empty for the last 10 years, and now they, even the landscaping's dead, so it's just a building that's going down. And I think everybody's familiar with the Wells buildings that are a complete disaster. It's completely ugly. They've abandoned their buildings, and from what I understand, hazmat under them. They'll probably stay empty forever. A little ways further through our scenic tour of Verdi, the core that everyone talks about, we have a gas station that now looks like a wrecking yard and boat storage. I mean, it's a complete mess, not fenced. And then we do have the project, the Verdi Inn, that's been empty for approximately 30 years, that now is fenced with temporary fencing, and they've taken down the boards, and it's a bigger mess than it ever was. So when we hear about the core of Verdi, what I hear of the core of Verdi, we have three bars, you know? I'm going to tell you, make a right on Bridge Street, and the third house on the right is all boarded up with garbage all over the yard. The core of Verdi is a junkyard. We are living in a junkyard. Period. Nobody can argue this point. This project gives us the jumpstart. It gives us the ability to perhaps to have middle-class homes come to Verdi, and more projects come to Verdi, and more people want to clean up our town and make it beautiful like the rest of our state is. And then one last thing I'd like to say, I say I'm running out of time, with all due respect to Sierra County, they can't run their own state. I would think that Sierra County officials need to go back to Sierra County. I don't think they really care about, if we were to go over and voice our opinion in Sierra County or California. I'm a transplant from California. Most people in Verdi are transplants from California, and the reason is high taxes and bad government. So please look at this project and please vote for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Having no other public comment cards, we have any more public comment cards? I'm going to close the public comment section. Bringing back the council, Mr. Dorich.
Are we going to hear from the applicant or the appellant? I'm sorry.
The appellate, yes. Are they, no, we heard from the appellate. Now we're going to...
No. The applicant is the appellate.
It's your turn up, sir. We don't know if we're going to call you an applicant, appelleant, or who the hell you are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
But you'll like it.
Good evening, John Krampotic. What, what, this is not an appeal, right? Just for the record, it's just action that went to Planning Commission that was advisory, and here we are at City Council. Of course, you all know that it failed at Council, at City, excuse me, at Planning Commission on a technical basis. We had a three to support, but because we needed supermajority, it didn't fly. Just a couple of things I wanted to touch on. I wasn't going to go into the details of the PUD because this is an SPA hearing. Lynette, could you, thank you. Where is the... So the, I, I think that, you know, and pretty much all the comments are about really what's forthcoming if Council were to support this amendment, but that is the amendment as proposed. Master Plan Amendment to Special Planning Area, it's just a color on the map. There's no density, there's no anything with it. From my perspective, the simple way of saying it's just hollow, so of course we need to talk about the PUD. But if you look in terms of conformance with the area, Fred Altman touched on it. We have the Mortenson-Garson Neighborhood Plan, which is Special Planning Area, and then a big area across the highway is also part of that SPA. And then, of course, we got a few other city designations, some unincorporated, single-family, small pocket, urban res, and mixed res, which is multifamily. The, the, I think that if we're going to give consideration to everybody in this, which we have done, you look at the pocket directly across the highway, which is the River Oaks subdivision, and that is, you know, noted on my site planner and that vicinity map at about six to the acre there. But it's not colored because this is just showing the city designations. Couple of things I would like to touch on because I, I think we made some huge progress with the community the last couple of weeks in dealing with some negotiations, deal-making, concessions, and so on. And what has evolved since Planning Commission is plan now that is 3.1 dwellings to the acre. I know that's an odd number because we look at single-family, the straight-up designation in our, in our master plan at three to the acre, but we evolved to a point of 3.1 to the acre, which would, if successful with building it out as desired, it would be a total of 320-some units. That, the, the project that we discussed at Planning Commission was just under 400, I think 394 units, about four to the acre. We're now down to 3.1 to the acre. The other thing we did in working with the community is reduce the commercial, that commercial you now see is neighborhood commercial at four to the acre. We had started at 15, went to 12, then went to 10. At Planning Commission, they saw 10, and then we said, we're going to go to four and make it all neighborhood commercial, and we did more restricted uses, which are the ones that the community leaders had a problem with, and I didn't elaborate. We didn't meet with everybody, but there were some people that have been very influential from the community side and very vocal. So I reached out to Carly and people that she knows and said, can you please put a group of leaders together, and let's try and work this out? We're not here to fight with you guys anymore. And I think we really made huge progress, just given, looking at the numbers this evening compared to what we had in the Planning Commission chambers is quite a change. But what we did is we added a pocket park because that was important to them. And even though I've been promoting the open space and trail component to this, they thought a neighborhood pocket park would be good. It's a different type of open space feature and amenity to the project. We removed, we had a 50-room hotel that was a, I think largely supported by the Planning Commission and at the time, staff, but we removed that because they had problems with it. We removed the 24-hour use that didn't need to go to special use permit, which was also a concern. And we had, in the neighborhood commercial area, at one time, we had multifamily if we didn't have the market for all the neighborhood commercial. They had a problem with that. So Mr. Fitzgerald agreed to remove that to just four plexes in any one building. So it would be more like single-family residential in character. I would also like to touch on a couple of the comments that were made by the community because I don't want to short-sell anybody in this process. We've been at it for 10 and a half months now. We've had three of our own community meetings. Carly and her group have had several. As you know, this is so much about negotiation and compromise, and you just got to keep finding ways to find solutions. And, but a couple of people's comments I'd like to address. Michelle Powers was up here a few minutes ago and asked you to listen, and I think we're all listening, and I know you guys are listening, but I still think there's a little misunderstanding about the density thing because she's living across the street of something that's twice the density that we're proposing. Project size is what it is. We're dealing with 100 acres and have a smaller area, but that is, the modular area of River Oak is in fact at six to the acre. Carl Adams, my perspective would be a little bit different. He talked about the water. You know, I look at land and water as a very precious resource, and you've got flatland here, and you have land in the city, and why not use that land where we're not doing one-acre lots that take a lot of water and a lot of landscape? Manage that resource, I think, is a little more precious resource. Ballot measure thing he touched on, it was over my head. Mr. Garcia touched on the roadway being blocked. I'm not sure what he's, what he was getting at, but I just wanted to give you a little more background. Maybe talking about there's a, there's some rocks a little bit to the south and east of the project, and apparently there's been some rock slides there. Of course, it's something that can be managed. I know in terms of the traffic capacity, we've cut and cut and cut, and it's down to just, you know, the level of service D is the operating accepted level of service. This at buildout with all of the buildout of the entire region of this area. County and city still operates at level of service C. So operating conditions there, I think, would be overall favorable. I'm pleased to hear Gideon Kapovitz, he's been a very strong voice in the community, and he touched on schools. I wanted to touch on that as well because we should all be concerned about school impacts. I called the school today because there's, and there's a school official here, there's all these weird numbers about capacity, but what's interesting to me, just straight-talk, citizen to citizen, the secretary says, John, we have 217 people at the school. When my kids went here, there were 300 comfortably and 350 if you push it a little bit of capacity. So it's not theoretical capacity, it's how many slots are open out there today. That is this school year, so it's current, nothing about, it's, it's odd to me how these numbers fly around, but that's, that's what I learned today. So the way we're seeing it, and I don't know if we would, if the school district would treat it this way, but there really are 100 slots of schools' capacity out there. In addition, as you guys know, Mr. Fitzgerald has agreed to building permanent classrooms if need be, if schools, school capacity was an issue at some point. Fred Altman, he's representing Mortenson. I will share with you a, another map. See, there's his property that comes in to the north and the east. They're zoned in their area, and I, and I don't know all the facts. He knows much more about it than me, but to give you some perspective on their density, they're at SF6 in their plan that was approved by the judge on the usable area. We are equivalent of like, if there was a designation, it would be SF14. So it's, it is in fact less dense. I don't know about the overall gross density, but just comparing those. There is the 10 to the acre across the street. Of course, that's a county designation, the little orange area. I mentioned the SF and the multifamily. And then there's industrial across the river. We all know about that. It's actually a nice employment source from my perspective to have in a little community like this. And then there's kind of the big picture. You see over the golf, further to the north across the golf course, that we purposely blended the county and the city zoning so you guys could get a sense of what's going on in the big picture. Then, of course, Boomtown and all of that property looking to the south, further up the bluff. the bluff. So there is our kind of conceptual land plan. You can see the land use now at 3.1 to the acre. I think we said it was 325 units, 90 acres of open space. One of the things I would hope that we would all embrace is, oh, there's the land plan too. I wanted to touch on that, because I didn't want to get into specifics of land planning, of how this could look, because it really is a master plan and zoning hearing at this stage. You can see there is 320 lots. They're comfortably fitting in there. We have some cul-de-sacs that back up. Not a lot of detail here, but there's a nice buffer that we would have next to the highway with some trees in there. And you see, of course, all the open space and the drainageways, and then the four-acre neighborhood commercial. This is, I think, what we've been largely pushing with the community as something that everybody would benefit from, is fishermen access parking on one side, trailhead parking on the other, public trails that would include going into the Mortenson property, connections to each of those parcels, so that we do have a really good network of public access. And then, of course, avoidance of the drainageways. This did come up, I don't know if you guys heard about it, but you see, I have the 50-foot public access easement plotted on there. That's something that, of course, we would have to respect and deal with in stubbing access to the property to the north. Just the city sphere, if there's any questions on that, and zoning on a bigger picture. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on your team wish to speak?
I think Mr. Fitzgerald is just here for questions.
He has four minutes.
Just for questions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, before we go any further in this, I need to make a declaration that I owned Boomtown for 30 years. I owned all the land Mr. Altman talking about. I know all of the developments that were going out there. I know the residential that Mr. Altman was talking about when they tied into Somerset to bring it into the city of Reno, so it connected across to Boomtown. That's how Boomtown got in to the city of Reno. It started up at the top with Somerset, tied in to the Mortenson Ranch, and came on across. I negotiated with a 90-something-year-old man, Mr. Mortenson, when I bought my land from him and all the stuff I have. So, Mr. Altman, I know what you're talking about. I know what you're talking about in schools, because I fed the schools on every fundraiser they ever had. I fed the volunteer fire department. You wanna check it? Check with the volunteer fire department. I underwrote every program they ever had when I owned Boomtown. I love that community. I do not, I am not gonna recuse myself. I do think I have something interesting to pass through this. I was not there just for 10 years, 12 years, or 13 years. I was there, I think, for 30 years. I don't wanna see a lot of garbage built out there. I've told this young man, you wanna build a lot of garbage, find you another place to build it. And I don't personally think, I would have probably negotiated down a couple of more units per acre than what's been talked about with some of you, but unless my legal counsel tells me to, I have no reason to recuse myself from any of the discussions going on here today. I'm probably the only one in this room that knows more about Verde, except some of the older people than me, and I'm 76, so you better find some real old ones that wanna disqualify me, 'cause I've been there, I've seen it, I know about the schools, I know how small the schools are, I know every bit about it, and I love that place. I love Verde, Nevada. At one time, they were even gonna build a dam down by Mogal and flood all of Verde. I said, the only reason they didn't do it is 'cause I would've had the only lakefront property, because they were gonna flood all of that area, all of Old Verde. And I don't wanna do anything to hurt that school, or to hurt the people out in Verde, and I am not gonna recuse myself unless my attorneys tell me that I should.
Mr. Mayor, just for quick clarification, you don't have any land holdings out there?
I don't own, I don't own one square inch of property.
And you don't have any financial dealings that are currently tied?
No, sir. They bought me out cash.
Fair enough, thank you.
That was the most favorite thing that ever happened to me in my life. They gave me cash to run. So anyway, I just wanted to make that disclosure, because I am gonna participate in these discussions. Thank y'all very much. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Doritz.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions for staff and a couple of comments. First of all, what's before us tonight as a master plan amendment? We're not considering any zoning. I mean, which of the issues have been brought up mostly tonight, correct?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, that's correct. This is simply the hearing for the master plan designation to special planning area.
And Jonathan, from our standpoint, I mean, the judge has basically told us, we can't consider density on a master plan amendment.
Correct, that's a zoning matter.
I mean, when this thing went before the judge, and the judge said, you have to separate those out, I mean, before, we used to hear them on the same night. We would hear the master plan amendment and the PUD. I mean, we've been told, we can't do that anymore. So we can't take into account density at all tonight.
Yeah, both analyses have to stand on their own, so you can't mix and match currently.
Right. And then, you know, some comments tonight, a lot of the comments tonight, a lot of the comments tonight have been about density, although someone did bring up the issue of water rights. And basically, what I got from the comments regarding water rights was that your water rights were more important than anybody else's water rights. If we denied a project because of water rights, even though they've got them, I mean, that would almost be a taking, wouldn't it, Jonathan? I mean, we can't, if they've got the water rights, I mean, we can approve the project, and they have to come up with the water rights to do the project. If we say you can't do that project, because we don't, we don't recognize those water rights anymore, because we don't believe that there's enough water, that would almost be a taking of some sort, wouldn't it?
And you're, again, that would be within the context of more of a, like a zoning type of application, not a master plan application.
Yeah, it's just the only reason I'm bringing it up is 'cause someone did bring it up tonight, and basically, the way I took that was, I've got my property, I've got my water rights on my property, your water rights mean nothing. And I don't know how you can make that determination. I don't know how we, as a council, can make that determination. So I don't know how we could consider that at all. I mean, again, we look at the land use, and if the land use is appropriate, before they can develop the property, they've gotta prove they have the water. That's the way it works. That's the way the system works. So those are my comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Jordan?
This is my ward, and I will say that I had the pleasure of meeting with some neighborhood representatives after the Planning Commission. And I appreciate very much Gideon and Carly and everybody coming together to try to come to a compromise. You know, I kind of joked, but not really joking, that if everybody walked out of the room and wasn't completely happy, then we had done a good job. Because for anybody to think that somebody's property rights, to have no development ever is a reasonable solution, versus those that could have really high density is a reasonable answer. Those are not reasonable answers. So we came to the meeting with about, I think there was eight or nine people that were in the room, and I will tell you, initially, there were some, you know, really strong personalities in the room, and there were some sensitivities, and the meeting was going sideways. There was no doubt the meeting was starting to slip a little sideways. But once we removed some of the emotion from it, and we talked about what was truly before us, cooler heads prevailed. And we walked out of that meeting, and please correct me if I'm, if I had a different impression than anybody else did, with a compromise. And the compromise was a reduction in the density, it was a reduction in the commercial, and it was the hopes that we could come here today and come to a compromise. So I feel, I'm a Somerset resident, but I am out in Verde with great regularity. I cycle, I take my family out there, we hike. The Sasquatch is our second home. I love that area. So I, like the mayor, understand the value of the character of the neighborhood, and I'm trying to balance that with the property owner's rights to develop. So to me, what I feel we're represented here tonight with is that compromise. And while we are not gonna make everybody happy, I believe we have done a good job of culling neighborhood meetings that were 60 and 70 people strong, that were very, very vocal in their opposition to this project, to what's represented here tonight. And so I hope we have appropriately conveyed that, and we can address some of the issues. I think there are some valid questions that still remain, but I just wanted to give a little context as to post Planning Commission meetings that occurred, and I appreciate the community coming to have this meeting, and the developer, and to try to come to a mutual compromise. So I appreciate everybody participating in that process.
Ms. Brackus?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. I have not participated in any side conversations with either the developer or other interested parties, sex party communication on this. But I do have a number of questions about how we got here, and I would direct those either at planning staff or legal staff. I guess my first question, and Mr. Krampotic somewhat referenced it, are we hearing an appeal tonight of anything? Was an appeal filed by any party to the Planning Commission action?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, no, there was not a formal appeal. The Planning Commission voted on the master plan amendment. It was a three in favor, two opposed vote, so technical denial. So they were not able to make a recommendation to council on the actual planning and development itself. And so... Correct. And so the master plan amendment recommendation of denial is forwarded to the City Council for your decision this evening.
Okay, so the Planning Commission, which has seven members, two were not present, correct? Were they not there for a particular reason, like they had a conflict of interest, or just not there?
They were not there, present.
Okay, so three-two on both votes, both the zoning map amendment and the master plan amendment.
Because they were not able to vote in the affirmative on the master plan amendment, they were not able to make a recommendation or vote on the PUD itself.
On the PUD. So that request, the status of that request, then, is...
Pending the council's decision.
Pending the council decision. So the master plan consideration of the Planning Commission to come up to us, as a recommendation in the affirmative, would have required what vote?
Still would have required all five votes.
So all present would have been there. And then again, at our table, a master plan requires a supermajority of five, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so when I read Reno Municipal Code 18.05, related to master plan amendments, and I know that text controls over diagrams, but it does appear that public committee, the City Council gets action from the Planning Commission, from items that have Planning Commission jurisdiction on a recommendation basis. I'm not saying a recommendation, so I'm wondering how we have jurisdiction. The other way that the Planning Committee, the City Council gets consideration of an item is through the appeal procedure, and you're telling me we don't have an appeal today. So I'm really wondering our jurisdiction tonight, and I, maybe that's not a question for you, but when I read that section, in concert with, let's see, well, the appeals section, actually, because I, you clarified that we're not having appeal, but when I read that section in concert with NRS 278.220, which I do believe pertains to our planning area, it says that "No change in or addition to the master plan or any point thereof is adopted by the Planning Commission, maybe made by the governing body, until, in adopting the same until the change or addition is referred to the Planning Commission for a report, and an attested copy of the report has been filed with the governing body." We don't have any report from the Planning Commission. We have a, like a failure-to-launch sort of situation, for lack of a better term. So I'm really troubled with the requests before us. When I read both statute and Reno Municipal Code, and you tell me what happened at the lower level, and I read the minutes, so maybe, do you have any comments on that?
I would defer that to legal counsel.
Councilmember Brackus, I'm looking at that provision right now. If you'll just give me, if you could continue with your questioning, and I can get back to you on that.
Okay, I will follow along with maybe some master plan conformity sort of things. We have, well, actually, there's been a little bit brought up about the nature of this property and how it came into the city of Reno. Can you explain the annexation component of this? How it came into the city, when it was annexed to the city?
It was annexed to the city in 2003, spring of 2003. It was part of an overall project called Bull Creek.
What was it called? Cold Creek? How did it come into our sphere of influence? Let's go back even further than that, so I can understand, 'cause I've heard a lot about the county planning work that's been going out in Verde, and I have great respect for the work that the county has done over many years in planning their rural and semi-rural and city interface areas. So I understand that's the basis, land use and zoning that we're working on. So how did the city, how did this property come into the sphere of influence where it would be subject to our consideration for annexation? Do you go back that far?
I'm not sure the exact history. Of course, as you know, sphere of influence is assigned by the regional planning government board.
My understanding, the history was when the people that owned Mortson Ranch and the other ranch, their land adjoined Somerset, and they requested to be annexed into the city. And so they were annexed into the city by continuous property, all the way up through Boomtown.
It wasn't a part of that legal settlement where a number of property owners participated, and there was a lawsuit between the regional planning, it was an annexation.
This site was annexed through a separate action.
And then this, the Mortenson-Garson overlay, I guess I see in the code, is that pertaining to this property?
It is adjacent to the property. Access to it is granted through easements on this site.
Okay, and when I see the cooperative, I see the Washoe County comments about cooperative zoning, cooperative planning area, what does that mean? Do we have a zoning provision called cooperative planning?
We do have a section in the municipal code that identifies specific standards for cooperative planning. There used to be a cooperative planning process. At this point, cooperative planning is for a master plan amendment, we send a notice to the Washoe County Community Development Director. That's the extent of the required exchange.
Okay, so the cooperative planning provision really is just a noticing procedure that essentially we'd be doing maybe anyway?
Correct.
Okay.
We did coordinate with Washoe County staff in the spirit of cooperative planning, given its designation, but notification to the Community Development Director was all that's required.
Okay, and then in terms of master plan zoning conformity, I know that another section of statute, which I'm not gonna read tonight, requires master plan zoning conformity. And if the master plan goes right now with the... What would be the conforming zoning? Is the zoning that is on each of those sub-bubbles conforming to the master plan designation that we are being asked to grant?
Ms. Brackus, could you bring your questions up? We, the council has a thing about five, six minutes of questioning and stuff. Could you bring your questions up?
Okay, okay. Can you show the conformity between each area where we do a master plan zoning, and tell us what the conforming zoning is for each of those?
Not sure I understand that question.
Well, can you go back to the bubbles there, where we had the...
Talking about Mr. Krampotic's?
Yeah, the master plan, okay, okay. So the whole area would be zoned, would be, have a master plan designation of SPA, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so let's start with the NC, the neighborhood commercial. That would have a master plan zoning, what master plan designation does that conform with?
The entire 199-acre site would be master plan special planning area. That would facilitate one zone, a planned unit development zone.
But we don't have that before us tonight.
That's the direction from the courts to hear each master plan amendments first, and following with a conforming zoning map amendment.
Okay, but let's say we approved the master plan tonight, and they decide not to follow through with the zoning, or the Planning Commission denies the zoning, then do we have a master plan? plan zoning inconformity on the books, on the maps?
That would be inconforming. However, the zoning and master planning are currently non-conforming. You have open space under the urban transition master plan designation. So there's non-conformity with the master plan designation on the site currently. Assigning this at this step, which is, again, the directions that the court has guided us to, to process master plan amendments as simple and singular and distinct actions, would follow up with a, it would create a temporary non-conformity with the zoning.
I thought open space was conforming to every master plan designation.
The, there is a non-conformity with the, I believe I had the other way around. It was the open space designation and unincorporated transition zone.
Okay. So I'll just, if Mr. Ship...
You wrapping up now?
Yes, I am.
Yep. Yeah, Councilman Brackus, I think, I mean, you pointed out a good point with the 278.220. What it means for tonight, just procedurally, how it's going to have to happen, is if the council approves the MPA, then under that 278.220, it does have to go back to Planning Commission. Planning Commission at that point has the ability to look at it, and if they issue a report back not recommending it, then it amounts to a denial at that point. But if it goes back and they don't issue a report out within 40 days, then it is deemed approved.
If they denied, it comes back to us.
Yeah, it's going to come back to you. So your point is well taken. It has to go back to Planning Commission. There's another step that has to happen.
Well, but then that gets into another section about what we can do to Planning Commission decisions. We can affirm, remand, or reverse. And since we don't have anything from them, how can we do any of those, other than...
Well, you have a technical denial.
Technical denial. Where does that exist in our RMC or in our NRS?
It's in the report.
I can try to find that. It might take me a minute to find that. But essentially, it's a denial because you don't have an affirmative vote for.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm seeing that maybe actions of no action from the Planning Commission don't go anywhere, is how I'm reading it. But I'm going to be quiet and let my colleagues bring in their...
I don't think that they did have action. They turned it down, and the action can come back to this council, whether it's appealed or not.
At a certain point, Councilman, at a certain point, there's going to have to be an appeal. So, I mean, it can't just go into a black hole. Maybe that's, taking that logic to the extreme, but, so to the extent that they didn't approve it, it's up here tonight, it's within the purview of the council to go either way on it. If it is an approval, it does, based upon the provision you pointed out, it has to go back to the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission has to weigh in on it, because you can't make the change at the table tonight if the Planning Commission hasn't proposed that change to you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may...
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to clarify that a master plan amendment requires a simple majority for the council.
No, I understand that. All right. Bring it back to the table for discussion. Anybody got any discussion questions? Mr. Dort, or did you have a question? Yes.
It's okay.
No. Mr. Dort, give me...
Just really quickly.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a question. Well, first of all, I'd like to commend Councilwoman Jordan and the stakeholders for sitting down. I think that's very admirable, and very important when you're dealing with very sensitive issues, and especially coming up with a compromise. So, Mr. Kompotic, can you just reiterate what those were for me, please?
The last source of concessions?
Yes.
So we were right at 400 units when we left Planning Commission, and there was a lot of tension, of course. And so I skipped a step. I met with Neoma and my client, and she was very helpful and skilled in bringing us together. And I think it's important that you all know that. And after we spoke, I said, "I'm going to do some heavy lifting, talk to the community," right? And so I, early, we said, "Let's just make this work." And so what it was, was going from four to the acre to 3.1 to the acre, okay, in the single family. And from 10, commercial, to four acres of commercial, but now only NC and more restriction on uses. Then we added a pocket park. And then there was, you know, things like fire, just a stronger level of assurance that there would be access to wild lands for fire access. I put it in the PUD because it was important to them. Frankly, I think it just sort of takes care of itself with all the access points we have, but it's important to them, and I respect that, so those were the biggies.
Mr. Kompotic, you have somebody above you that has 1,300 acres. Have you given them access to that area because you can't land lock them?
Yeah. Can I show you, Mr. Mayor?
I wish you would.
Yeah, let me...
Before I get after you.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, John Schuman, Deputy City Engineer. I just want to, again, refocus the council on what we're talking about tonight is a master plan amendment. It is not a zone change. So, you know, if I could refer you again to the findings in your packet, those are the types of things you need to be looking at tonight.
My question's out of line, sir.
I know this is important to you, and I want to make sure it's important to Mr. Altman and whoever else is right here, has plotted a legal access, that crosshatch area right there. We have, Mr. Fitzgerald tells me, Mr. Fitzgerald tells me that's relocated. Go ahead and finish this, Rob.
Yeah, this map doesn't reflect one other access point.
Did you mention your name?
Oh, Rob Fitzgerald, for the record. It's one other access point. I don't know how to do this here, probably my finger's in the way. But there's another access point on the easterly portion of the property, deeded access to the properties to the rear.
What width? What do you got? 20 feet, 30 feet?
Oh, no, no, it's 50, I believe.
50 feet?
Yeah. It was an access easement, I believe, was probably negotiated...
It was way back.
...the development behind us.
For the record, Bill Goll, Senior Civil Engineer. While that shows up, those two access easements show up there. They were deeded per a document for access easement. They're both 52 feet wide, and they are relocatable with development. But at this point, both those access easements travel up to that area.
All right. Bring it back to the table.
Real quick?
Yes.
A quick question. With the change of the current, to the SPA possibly, and then possibly go on PUD, that's going to require that you guys bring in water, sewer, and all those connections currently, right? And that'd be possibly in the future, an opportunity, my understanding, talking to residents out there, that, because currently everyone's on well, and everyone's on, is that my understanding correct?
Yeah, I think you're pretty on the mark. You know, the public, the community water line is about a mile away at the roundabout there at the base of Somerset. So he's going to pull in an 18-inch line, ductal iron line, right to the front of the project. It gives an opportunity for other connectors, of course, because Tom Wa is sizing it for anybody that would be in a position to connect. We do here, and I don't know it to be true, but it sounds legitimate from the sources, that there's inches from the school because there's contamination of water, kids drinking well water. So that would be a good thing to get them on the community line. Of course, we've talked about the sewer thing, too, that you got that empty interceptor that's been stubbed out there. Thank you.
And I heard one thing from you, say that you guys would possibly look at doing permanent additions to the school. Is that brick and mortar, or is that like a module?
Permanent stick-built modular. Yeah, not a, not a knocking down walls on the school.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I meant just to add a few more procedural questions or content...
If you're limited now.
Yes, sir.
Don't get carried.
First of all, a lot of these compromises that are made, would those change the complexion of the action we are taking? Or how are those recorded? Would they be in the clerk's letter stating there's going to be a pocket park here, an easement here? It's been changed to this degree from what the Planning Commission saw. Well, we're not talking about the PUD, so...
We're not supposed to be talking about any of that.
Well, so that's why I'm wondering how that can be the basis for our decision, these sort of offerings. And that's kind of a problem for me. I think if the council is of a mind to accept this master plan amendment, it would be best to send it down for remand to the Planning Commission. I think that would be well advised. But I have another question about this, and, you know, if you want to weigh in on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd just like to tell Ms. Brackus that, you know, there's some trust here. We've done a lot of deal making.
Yes.
Right, with you guys and the community. I mean, what's reflected in the PUD is done, so she has to trust that.
Okay. My other question is, is this still a project of regional significance, this master plan amendment? Because it's divorced from the PUD. So then, how does that work when it goes on up, if we were to approve this to regional planning?
I believe it is still, it's still a...
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. With the changes submitted to the Planning Commission for their review, when the applicant suggested changes for their review, it was no longer a project of regional significance.
So the advertisement tonight that called it, I mean, did it call it a project of regional significance?
You can't change from the original Planning Commission notice. It would be an overnotice.
Okay. And I guess then, the questions that I had for our fire chief related to our ability to serve this area, and the letter he put in, really would not be of topic, or would they? Because we are talking about, well, let's look at the findings then, as council discussed.
Chief can be there in 6.3 minutes.
Mr. Shipman?
Yes, they're located. The findings that you need to be looking at are on page 71 of your packet. And then I'd also refer you to, for the analysis provided by staff, it starts on page 67. And again, these are not, you know, we're not talking about specific uses. We're talking about whether or not the amendment is consistent with a series of master plan policies.
Well, from, wait a second. You're saying page 71?
Page 71, so for master plan considerations for the city council, A, as may be applied practically to the physical development of the city for the reasonable period next ensuing. So you've got those three, and those come directly out of NRS. NRS...
Okay.
And then, and if you need additional background for that, I'd point you to page 67 and 68, which talk about how that fits in...
The discussion.
The discussion. So that's the level of discussion that we're looking at.
Okay. So really, and there's nothing else in the code of rote findings in RMC?
No, no. This is taken directly out of NRS, correct.
So really, when the Planning Commission made the decision, their considerations were related to bears? Bears? Bears relation to the planning and physical development? I thought it was like, wow, they've thrown in bears into here. We are out in Verde. Okay, so the, this Planning Commission, when they took consideration, this was looking to other factors of consideration. So we look at it from a different view, and it's, okay, conformed to the adoption, adequate supply of housing.
I've never approved a project about bears.
Yeah. Master plan amendment should not be in effect prior to the tri-coming of finding the master plan amendments conformed to the regional. Is that in state law? That's an NRS provision?
I believe that's in state law, yes. I can find you a site for it.
Well, we don't need to do the whole legal thing tonight. Let's move on.
Well, form a basis for the efficient expenditures of funds relating to the subjects of the city of Reno master plan. How does this request form a basis for the efficient expenditure of funds related to the subjects of the city of Reno master plan?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. A special planning area by its nature is a bit ambiguous. It would, as far as conforming zoning, it would allow for a planned unit development in this area. A planned unit development could be a very small scale. I mean, it could be industrial, it could be anything. It would require further analysis.
Okay. Well, okay. Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jordan.
The only comment I wanted to make, and while this is just a master plan amendment that's before us tonight, I felt it important to speak to some of the concessions and some of the compromises being reached, because they were of importance to the community. So while that may not be the detail in which we are deliberating and voting on tonight, it was of significance to the neighbors. And so that is why I brought some of that detail up.
Ms. Edgar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nathan, first of all, I want to thank our fellow councilwoman, Jordan, for the effort that you've taken to try and find the compromises and mitigation for some of the community concerns, because that's what we're supposed to do. So thank you. Nathan, not to oversimplify this, but we have an annexed property that came to us with certain prescribed land use rights. And what's in front of us tonight, the master plan amendment, is within keeping and minor modification, correct? And again, I don't want to oversimplify it, but what are the three points that are literally different from what we annexed and what we're attempting to do tonight?
On annexation, the Washoe County zoning designations that were in place were translated to city of Reno designations. There was a tentative map and a special use permit processed in the county, also in the city of Reno, that held the spirit of those existing designations. What the applicant is requesting is a master plan amendment to special planning area, which would facilitate a planned unit development. That could be, it's open-ended. It's a custom zone that the Planning Commission will make a recommendation on, and the council will make an ultimate decision on its overall appropriateness with the site.
Thank you.
Mr. Dort, you have anything?
I have a question for the chief related to a subject of the master plan.
Chief, do you mind coming up a minute?
I understand that public safety is a master plan element. Is that correct? Yes. And you did test runs to this area. And I just want to know about the test runs. What response time district is this?
This is, for the record, Mike Conan, the Reno Fire Chief. This is considered a suburban area. We attempt to reach suburban areas within six to eight minutes. I personally drove from Station 11 on Mayan to the proposed entrance to the site, and I got there in just under seven minutes, about 6 minutes and 40 seconds. That was me driving, no lights, no sirens. The route that I took was out of Station 11, down Mayan to Rob, Rob onto I-80, directly to the off-ramp to Highway 40. And I believe there's a large barn in that area, and that's the proposed entrance site. The second run we did, we used the 4th Street. We came, took a right out of the station, went down to 4th Street. It was actually longer, because there's some dead ends, and that was right at about 7 minutes and 45 seconds. And that was me doing this. I did pull some research. On June 25th of this year, Reno Engine 11 responded into Boomtown, which is directly, as a crow flies, directly east of that location. They arrived in approximately...
West.
I'm sorry, west. 6 minutes and 15 seconds. In June 25th of 2014, I'm sorry, June, October 24th of 2013, we had another EMS call, and they arrived in 9 minutes and 3 seconds.
Tell me this. You're aware that there's a large truck stop that the city council has approved in this vicinity. Will that be increasing?
Where is that?
It is near Boomtown, right?
Boomtown?
Truck stop?
Oh, there's one east of Cabela's at Boomtown.
Yes.
Way past that.
Will that, will that be resulting in a more congestion in this area?
No.
That's going to be speculated at best. What impacts our response times to a large degree is traffic, time of day, and conditions of our road weather.
And what about staffing? Because this council, the, the, the will of this council is that the staffing that you have today is not the staffing that you will, would have. So your staffing is planned to be reduced. So would that staffing drop impact your response times?
Absolutely not. I consider Station 11, Mayan, a critical station. That is one station that will not, in the immediate future or in the foreseeable future, ever be browned out, closed, or reduced in staffing. In fact, that is a station that primarily serves the western portion of our city. Again, I consider that a critical staff station that would not be impacted with respect to reduced staffing.
The truck stop you're referring to...
Can I just ask a follow-up question?
One, let me finish. One, the truck stop you're referring to is west of Cabela's, not even close to this location.
Okay. Well, I was just...
And just a follow-up question. Chief, this is currently in the city of Reno. That's correct. So anything that's built there, we're going to have to respond to. That is correct.
Yes.
So the response times are the same. As we speak... So no matter what we build there, it's...
So no matter what we build there, it's us. I mean, it's us that's responding.
That is absolutely correct, and I use the...
And that's not gonna change whether we approve this project or some other project.
100% correct. Councilmember Dorch, in fact, we respond routinely to Boomtown.
Right.
In fact, it takes us longer to get to Boomtown than it would this proposed property because of the access and freeway off-ramp.
But again, it's in the city already. It's our responsibility. Whatever's built there, whatever's developed there, we're gonna have to respond to.
You are 100% correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify something, it's not the will of this city council to reduce the number of firefighters, it's our budget. It's, I don't think anyone at this table is sitting here saying, "We want to see less firefighters out there."
That's right.
But our budget demands it, so to say it's our will, I...
Well, I think it was clearly an action we took, and I voted for that, and I'll accept that, so it is, it is, no, but I'm not stating whether or not I want it, I'm stating it is a decision that this council has been made. So the fire response that we have today is not, but you're saying that we will not be shorted in any way. It's not a ripple effect, those folks over at Mayan might not be busy somewhere else, and then we're short in that west part of town. You're comfortable that you'll always be able to get over here.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Ms. Jordan.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Hmm?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Let's get it.
Given all the factors represented...
We've diagnosed this baby long enough.
There's been lots of very good community dialogue, and I appreciate everybody coming to the table. So I will make the motion that I can make the findings, and I will move to approve the master plan amendment, and if I need to modify that, I'll look to legal counsel if I need to word it differently, or if that's okay.
No, that's okay for now, then I will read the resolution, and you'll adopt the resolution.
Thank you.
That'd be great, so go ahead and read.
Yeah, sorry.
Let me get a second first, have a second, now you can read.
Well, no, I think we gotta vote on that.
Okay, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no.
I'm not in favor of this because I think the record is very scanty on evidence by which we are basing this decision, so I am not...
That's fine, so the vote's 6-1. Now, go ahead, councillor, and read the...
Well, I was gonna, responding to Councilmember Jordan's question, it would be helpful in the record if you could refer to a finding and say what is, you know, making, why you can make those findings, I mean, other than just kind of a general statement, I can make the findings. So, for instance, this amendment is gonna serve as a pattern and guide for that kind of orderly physical growth and development of the city, which will cause the least amount of natural resource impairment. If you have any comments on that, how you, will conform to the adopted population plan, ensure the adequate supply of housing, including affordable housing, and form spaces for efficient expenditure of funds. I think there's been a lot said between the fire and whatnot, but if there's specific things that you want to call out, that would be great if you could make them part of the record.
No, absolutely, and rather than reiterate your sentences, do we just need to go from the letters? The A, the, or do you need me to reiterate?
Yeah, so A, 1, 2, and 3, and some of the analysis is provided on page 67, you know, relating it to the existing master plan policies that we have in place.
Okay.
If that's helpful.
Absolutely, I can make the findings with regards to A, 1, 2, and 3, and the provisions relative to the master plan, those which have, you have given some more specifics to in your language, thank you, so I will add that to my motion.
In other words, as more specifically set forth on page 67 and 68 of the staff report.
Thank you, I didn't know if you wanted me to read both sides of the page, or if I could just refer to that, okay.
No, just by reference.
Okay, thank you.
So, now we get to resolution number 8,000, which is a resolution to amend resolution number 5673 by adopting a change to the land use plan of the Reno master plan as approved in case number LDC 14-00023.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
As...
6-1, I'm sorry.
And your honor, just as a, just a follow-up procedurally, this is gonna have to go back to the planning commission pursuant to the NRS provision, it's NRS 278.220 subsection 4. The planning commission has to be given at least 40 days to consider this. If they agree with it, then, or if they disagree with it, they have to come back with a report. If they don't come back with a report, it's deemed approved.
Okay, so those are the rules, all right. Chair, entertain one of my favorite motions.
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, I always forget that. Anybody got anything you want to say? Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank council for their consideration and everybody, especially Neoma, who really helped bring us together, maybe not 100%, but we came a long ways, and I assure you, I live out there, it's not gonna be a bad project.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from anybody? Yes, sir, come on up. Identify yourself for the record, and we'll have a lot of fun.
Mike Garcia, I just wanted to reiterate about the part of the road that's next to the river, there's this rock pile, and you must know it because you live out there.
I do.
The dangerous time would be if there's a big storm, and the river's flooding on one end, and the river's flooding by the rock pile, and because the rocks are already fractured, some come down, and then I wondered how long it would take for the fire department to get out there and help, because that's the only road in without going all the way around past Boomtown or going down the little road under Boomtown, and I wondered what the time limit would be to get there going the long way around.
In my 30 years there, I have never seen what you described, even when it flooded.
I've seen it three times since I've been there.
No, you've never seen the road covered, or the walls come down where you couldn't get through.
I've seen the rocks big enough to stop traffic.
But you could still get by.
That's all I'm saying, sir. No, we could not get by.
Well, you must have been one night when I wasn't there.
It was during the day.
Must have been one day when I wasn't there.
Well, probably not, sir.
We can debate that.
I've not been there all the time either, but three times I've had to wait, and each time it was over half an hour to clear, which I thought was a wonderful time.
Yeah.
But I'd sure like an answer to that question.
You got a fire station that'll be right above Boomtown that can drop straight in there? Any other questions, anything else? Yeah, come on up. Identify yourself for the record when you come up.
Hello, my name is Carley Borchard. I just wanted to introduce myself really quickly, since my name was brought up several times, and so that people know who I am. I've grown up in Verde. I actually went to the elementary school, I've lived out there 27 years, so myself and a couple friends have put together the Verde Coalition, which is just an organization that we put together to inform our community members of this process and of the development itself.
We appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, come on.
My name's Gene Gardella, I live in Verde, and I wanted to make three comments or points as quickly as I could. I couldn't make it here during the period because I was in class. First concern, one of the concerns I have is that the fire chief has measured the fire time or the runtime to the barn. The access into the residential area is about a quarter to a half a mile further down the road, and so you've got to get into the residential area, and then you would go down toward the river, or you would double back toward the barn, which is gonna make it about another mile in, so that's gonna add considerably to the runtime into that area, and I have major concerns about that. Second thing that I had a concern about is that by, and this is kind of a broad perspective issue, by approving an increase in the number of residences available, when we have 31,000 of them out there now, I have a concern that what might very well happen is that in, as we go down the line, the developers above this site and other developers in town might very well say, "I've got to get my project going because we're gonna run out of school space," and at some point, the city and the county are gonna have, and Sparks, are gonna have to say, "No more development until we resolve the issue in building more schools and having more schools." So I would just take the perspective of hoping that you would think down the line and be very thoughtful about approving additional residential lots and residential areas. Lastly, I'm hopeful that what has been approved here allows us to have comment on the development of the PUD. I'm not concerned, overly concerned about the number of additional houses in this particular development from my perspective, however, I do have concerns about some of the issues in constraints that are in their conditions, and I'll give you just two of them. The most important one, I think, is the fact that we are, the developer has said, "We want to put in a pocket park to service just our area." When I was on the Verde Advisory Board, we spent all of our park money extending the trail, the bike trail, so the people weren't on the freeway, and put the additional monies into the Crystal Peak Park, developing the fish ponds and whatnot. We have no money to do anything in regards to parks. This community needs a park in which kids can go and play baseball, soccer, and things of that nature. There's no way that we can provide it, and I think it's important to ask this developer to say, "Don't put a pocket park that has very limited resources, put in something that the whole community can use and take advantage of." The other one I had very quickly is access out, not just for the developer up above, but access into the trail system on Peabody Mountain and along the river. Thank you.
Mr. Gardella?
And just so you're aware, the PUD still has to be heard by the planning commission and the council.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? If not, I will entertain my favorite motion. Oh, wait a minute, a public comment. I just did public comment. My favorite motion, what was it, Mr. Dorch, give me mine. Move to adjourn. Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that don't vote no, don't count, this meeting's adjourned.